Good evening all, it is now seven o'clock, we are ready to begin our meeting. This February eighteenth, twenty twenty-one, regular meeting of the Fairfax County School Board will now come to order. I will take role. Ms. Cohen?
Here.
Ms. Corbett Sanders?
Good evening, everybody.
Ms. Darnak Kofax?
Hello, good evening.
Mr. Fresh?
Hello, hello.
Ms. Keys-Gamara?
Good evening.
Ms. McLaughlin?
Here.
Ms. Marin?
Good evening.
Ms. Omeish?
Hello.
Ms. Bukarski?
Good evening, everyone.
Ms. Tolan?
Good evening, thank you.
Mr. Anabudo?
I'm here, good evening.
Good evening, everyone. Please rise as our student representative, Nathan Anabudo, leads us in the reciting of the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a moment of silence. Mr. Anabudo?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you all. In order to comply with Section two point two dash three seven one two D of the Code of Virginia, it is necessary for the Board to certify that since the Fairfax County School Board convened a closed meeting on February eighteenth, twenty twenty, and to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed session were heard, discussed, or considered by the Board during the closed meeting. I see that's been moved by Ms. Corbett Sanders and seconded by Ms. Omeish, all in favor? Ms. Corbett Sanders, Ms. Omeish, Ms. Marin, Mr. Fresh, Ms. Seismohizer, Ms. Cohen, Ms. Darnak Kofax, Ms. Tolan, Ms. Bukarski, got to move my screen here. I'm so sorry, I lost my place here. Ms. Cohen? Ms. Tolan? Ms. Darnak Kofax, Ms. Tolan, Ms. McLaughlin, Ms. Keys-Gamara, and myself. I don't think I've recorded a vote for everyone. Was there anyone who abstained or voted a no? I'm so sorry, Ms. Seismohizer, I did not call your name, that is unanimous, thank you. And I'll call on Mr. Anabudo for an announcement. Mr. Anabudo?
Thank you, Dr. Anderson. March, March, March second marks the Read Across America Day. Education Associations, um, the NEA, Read Across America, now in its twenty-first year, is an annual reading motivation and awareness program that calls for every child in every community to celebrate reading on and around Dr. Seuss's birthday. This year's celebration is based on the theme "Celebrating a Nation of Diverse Readers", sends a clear message that our public schools are places where every child is welcome and encourages students to delve in diverse books from diverse authors that will appeal to an increasing diverse student population. In cities and towns across the nation, teachers, teenagers, librarians, politicians, actors, athletes, parents, grandparents, and others develop NEAs Read Across America activities to bring reading excitement to children of all ages. Thank you, Dr. Anderson. Dr. Anderson, you're on mute.
Thank you, Mr. Anabudo, I believe you have a second announcement as well for National Foreign Language Week?
Yes ma'am, I do, thank you. National Foreign Language Week is March seventh through the thirteenth. The week of March seventh through the thirteenth, twenty twenty-one, has been designated as National Foreign Language Week. The Alpha Mu Gamma Foreign Language Honor Society has sponsored National Foreign Language Week since nineteen fifty-seven. And the theme for twenty twenty-one is "Open Your Mind to Language". Schools are encouraged to use this opportunity to highlight the value of learning world languages and to celebrate the successes of world language students and teachers. Learning a foreign language also promotes cultural sharing and understanding in today's global community. Thank you.
Thank you. I understand we have a sound issue, that there's no audio for our audience at home, that we have either music playing or no audio. Uh, Ms. Smallberg, can we have this be checked on by IT and confirmation?
Working on it, and we hope to have it fixed in a moment.
Okay, until it is repaired, we will recess until that point. So please stand by.
Okay, the IT team has fixed the problem.
Thank you very much for fixing that issue. Being that the first part of our meeting was not heard by our public, we will need to revisit the certification of close. We will not do roll call because I believe we have everybody on board. So let's start again. In order to comply with Section two point two dash three seven one two D of the Code of Virginia, it is necessary for the Board to certify that since the Fairfax County School Board convened a closed meeting on February eighteenth, twenty twenty, and to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the Board during the closed session. That is moved by Ms. Sanders and seconded by Ms. Cohen. All in favor? Ms. Sanders, I'm sorry, Ms. Corbett Sanders? Ms. Cohen, Ms. Darnak Kofax, Ms. Omeish, Ms. Seismohizer, Mr. Fresh, Ms. Bukarski, Ms. Marin, Ms. Tolan, Ms. McLaughlin, and myself. Thank you, please lower your hands. That is eleven. We don't have a vote registered for Ms. Keys-Gamara at this time. Oh, and Ms. Keys-Gamara just voted, so that is unanimous, thank you. Uh, Mr. Anabudo, I will ask you to go ahead and re-present your announcements in just a little while. But before I ask you to do that, I will share the general announcement that if you would like to review a copy of the agenda and any agenda item that is being discussed tonight, that information is going to be provided to you online. And tonight's meeting is being broadcast on channel ninety-nine and livestreamed on the website at FCPS.edu.tv, uh, I'm sorry, slash TV slash CH nine-nine. Again, all of the documents can be found on Board Docs. I call on Mr. Anabudo for an announcement.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson. Read Across America Day is on March second. Education Associations NEA, Read Across America, now in its twenty-first year, is an annual reading motivation and awareness program that calls for every child in every community to celebrate reading on and around Dr. Seuss's birthday. This year's celebration is based on the theme "Celebrating a Nation of Diverse Readers", sends a clear message that our public schools are places where every child is welcome and encourages students to delve into diverse books from diverse authors that will appeal to increasingly diverse student populations. In cities and towns across the nation, teachers, teenagers, librarians, politicians, actors, athletes, parents, grandparents, and others develop the NEAs Read Across America activities to bring reading excitement to children of all ages. Thank you, Dr. Anderson.
Thank you. I also call on Mr. Anabudo for the National Foreign Language Week announcement.
Thank you. National Foreign Language Week is March seventh through the thirteenth. The week of March seventh through the thirteenth, twenty twenty-one, has been designated as National Foreign Language Week. The Alpha Mu Gamma Foreign Language Honor Society has sponsored National Foreign Language Week since nineteen fifty-seven. And the theme for twenty twenty-one is "Open Your Mind to Language". Schools are encouraged to use this opportunity to highlight the value of learning world languages and to celebrate the successes of world language students and teachers. Learning a foreign language also promotes cultural sharing and understanding in today's global community. Thank you, Dr. Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Anabudo. Now we will have a recognition of an award that was provided to, uh, posthumously by one of, to one of our former teachers by the Providence Chapter of the DAR. I will ask for the clerk to please pull up the slide and for Dr. Braybrand to join us as he was present to receive this award on behalf of Fairfax County Public Schools. Uh, this award was provided by Minnie Beckwith, who was born in Fairfax County on December eighth, eighteen seventy-one, to Alfred and Fanny Beckwith, who were freed slaves. She attended local public schools until she was fifteen years old, when the teacher told her father she had maxed out for public school education. There was no secondary school option for African-American students like Minnie, so she began working in a hotel in Clifton. In eighteen ninety, the Beckwith family opened their home to board a new teacher in the area, and this teacher encouraged Minnie to continue her education at Hampton Institute, now known as Hampton University. Minnie started Hampton in the fall of eighteen ninety-one and returned to Fairfax to the Hughesville School for, for the required one year of unsupervised teaching. She returned to Hampton in the fall of eighteen ninety-five and graduated the following May. She passed the state's qualifying teaching exams and returned again to Fairfax County to begin a career that would span forty-three years. Dr. Braybrand, I'll ask you to pick up and speak to her career at Fairfax County at this time.
Thank you Chairman Anderson. Uh, during this time, Hornetown, Hurst Station, Clifton, Cubron, Hughesville, the Fairfax African-American School and the Fairfax Rosenwald School, where she was both an upper school, uh, teacher and principal. And nineteen oh-two, she married Philip Hughes, another early African-American teacher in Fairfax County, and, uh, for whose family Hughesville received its name. There were two more generations of Hughes that would go on to pursue careers in education. In fact, her daughter became a public school teacher and principal in Fairfax County. One grandson became a public school teacher and principal in Rappahannock County. And one granddaughter is the recently retired professor of law from Howard University Law School. She worked, Minnie did, in teaching from eighteen ninety-four until her retirement in nineteen thirty-seven, only leaving the classroom for a brief period when she had children. At the time of her death, at a hundred and three, she was the oldest pensioner in the history of Fairfax County Public Schools. Ms. Minnie Beckwith Hughes, through her own career and those of her posterity, has left a tremendous legacy on the African-American community of Fairfax County and of Fairfax County Public Schools. This past Saturday, the Providence Chapter of the National Society of the Daughters of the American Revolution awarded Ms. Hughes the Woman in History, American History Award, which I and Chairman Anderson gratefully accepted on her behalf. The award pays tribute to the role of women past and present in American history, and we're honored and privileged to be able to lift up and share the story of Ms. Minnie Beckwith Hughes, who worked tirelessly to improve the lives of countless children in Fairfax County and in Fairfax County Public Schools. And it was an honor to be there, and we hope that we can do an even better job lifting up many more names of folks who have served in the Fairfax County, uh, Schools community and to tell their stories. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Braybrand. At this time, I call on Ms. McLaughlin for a recognition of Social Work Appreciation Month.
Great, thank you Chairman Anderson. As the only social worker on the Fairfax County School Board, I always look forward to every year being able to read this, um, monthly recognition and just want to express, um, my tremendous respect and appreciation for our social workers here in Fairfax County Schools. No year like this one has ever shown how important you are to helping our children and also our employees in, um, grappling with the demands and the challenges of this pandemic. So, in honor of all of you, for March is the National Social Work Month and School Social Worker Week, which is March seventh to the thirteenth. This year's National Association Social Workers theme is "Social Workers Are Essential". School social workers are master's degree professionals who are trained to examine and address life's challenges in a holistic way. They have expertise in many areas, including mental health, human development and behavior, trauma, and family systems. School social workers are needed now more than ever as we support students and families during the COVID pandemic. They increase student and family engagement by fostering positive relationships and creating hope and opportunity for youth and families in need. School social workers facilitate skill building and strengthen support systems to help students cope, problem solve, overcome barriers, and access resources to support distance learning and the return to school buildings. Social workers tackle some of the toughest challenges facing our society. In every city, in every community, they develop solutions to increase access to both mental health and physical healthcare, reduce poverty, eliminate injustices, and protect vulnerable children from harm. School social workers are essential members of the school multidisciplinary team, working with school faculty and families to provide coordinated interventions and consultation designed to help students in school and help families access the supports and resources needed to ensure student success. They promote a positive school climate and culture through a trauma-sensitive lens to maximize student learning. School social workers in Fairfax County Public Schools use their training, experience, and skills to provide services to children, families, and school staff in an effort to remove personal and environmental obstacles for supporting student academic performance. They are committed to helping every child achieve, ensuring equitable access and opportunity, building relationships to strengthen student and family engagement, and supporting mental health wellness to help students succeed in school and in life. Thank you Chairman Anderson.
Thank you, Ms. McLaughlin. Typically, these recognitions will be done in person with some of our social workers to, uh, take some photos with the School Board, but since we're not able to do that in this setting, the Social Work Office does have a video, a short video that they would like to share. So Ms. Smallberg, we are ready for you to, um, play that.
My name is Anne Marie Colligan, and I'm the school social worker at West Springfield High School. I did a home visit yesterday with the MTSS, and we arrived at the exact moment that the father and son were discussing his failing grades. The son felt hopeless and resigned to attend summer school. The father said we were like angels sent at the exact moment to provide hope and guidance to his son.
Hi, I'm Karen, and I support Little Run Elementary School, Himatt Early Childhood, and the preschool resource teachers. And I've enjoyed using my komochi characters, Hug the Puss, Cat, Cloud, and Bug, to teach my friends how to understand and articulate their feelings, particularly during this time of winter.
Hi, my name is Jenny Alvarez, I'm the school social worker at Wayne Oak Elementary School. Early in this school year, I made a connection with the organization, PE, CHOR. They have since donated food during holiday assistance. Over a hundred, we use the roll of sanitary napkins to continue to offer us with resources for our families in need. And I'm glad that I've made this connection, thank you.
I'm Amy Young, and I've worked with students who are deaf or hard of hearing at Pitts in high school. The deaf community has faced unique challenges related to accessibility for both technology and communication during distance learning. Many of our students live in homes where communication is not accessible for them. They may have limited available support for their schoolwork and their emotional health. In addition to meeting with students during distance learning, I've worked to connect families to deaf-centered resources to support their child.
Thank you, that was really inspiring. Thank you so much to the Social Work Office for providing us with that wonderful opportunity to hear more about the work of our social workers. And now we'll call on Ms. Bukarski for a resolution, recognizing National Athletic Training Month.
Thank you. March is National Athletic Training Month, and this year's theme is "Essential to Healthcare". An appropriate slogan reflecting the important role certified athletic trainers employed by Fairfax County Public Schools play in keeping our students safe. The slogan perhaps carries a bit more weight this year, given all that has happened since last March, and the important role our certified athletic trainers have played in our efforts to resume athletic opportunities within FCPS. Nationally certified and state-licensed medical professionals, FCPS athletic trainers dedicate themselves to promoting the health and safety of our student athletes before, during, and after practices and competitions. While the last year has forced our athletic trainers to adapt to a changing environment, FCPS athletic trainers remain committed to providing the full complement of athletic healthcare services that has defined this group of professionals over the nearly forty years that FCPS has employed athletic trainers in our high schools. In fact, even with the interruptions in our spring athletic season, over eight thousand seven hundred students received care from an FCPS athletic trainer during the twenty nineteen-twenty school year, accounting for sixty-seven thousand visits to our twenty-five athletic training facilities. Our ability to resume out-of-season workouts last August and competitive athletics in December has required, required all involved with our athletic programs to navigate a host of challenges to support our student athletes. FCPS athletic trainers, in partnership with directors of student activities, assistant directors of student activities, and athletic coaches, have been the forefront of these efforts, developing and implementing a host of new policies and protocols designed to keep students safe. FCPS athletic trainers consistently go above and beyond to support our athletic programs and without question are essential members of each school's activities program. Even when faced with unprecedented circumstances, FCPS athletic trainers play a vital role in our overall efforts to support athletic opportunities for FCPS students. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bukarski. I will now call again on Ms. McLaughlin for our Women's History Month resolution. Ms. McLaughlin? You're, you don't have your sound on just quite.
There we go, thank you. I'm very excited to read this year's resolution because as it turns out, I just discovered that my hometown of Santa Rosa, California, was the first to begin this type of recognition, and, uh, it will be captured in the resolution. So for Women's History Month, March twenty twenty-one, whereas March is Women's History, Women's History Month, and this year's theme, Valiant Women of the Vote, marks the hundred and first anniversary of women achieving this right to vote. Whereas we honor the, those who gathered at Seneca Falls in eighteen forty-eight for the first women's right convention organized by Elizabeth Cady Stanton and Lucretia Mott, launching the women's suffrage movement. The convention's manifesto, the Declaration of Sentiments, drew its inspiration from Thomas Jefferson's Declaration of Independence, but added the words "woman" and "women" throughout to call upon women to fight for the constitutional guaranteed right to equality as US citizens. Whereas Susan B. Anthony, an abolitionist, gave many passionate speeches against slavery at a time when most thought it was improper for women to give speeches in public. She later joined Staunton and became one of the most visible leaders of the women's suffrage movement, traveling the country and giving speeches in favor of a women's right to vote. In eighteen seventy-two, Anthony was arrested for voting and fined a hundred dollars, which helped bring national attention to this issue. Anthony and Staunton then spent fifty years together fighting for women's rights. Whereas Elizabeth Glasgow is a native Virginian, a Pulitzer Prize-winning author, and the namesake of Glasgow Middle School. She write, wrote some twenty novels, many with strong women characters, like women who were seeking the right to vote. In the early nineteen hundreds, she spoke at the first women's suffrage meeting in Virginia and helped establish the Equal Suffrage League of Virginia. Whereas the Silent Sentinels, organized by Alice Paul and Lucy Burns, picketed outside the White House six days a week from dawn until dusk in the bitter cold, starting in January nineteen seventeen. They called upon President Wilson to support a women's suffrage amendment to the Constitution. Once the US entered World War One, public opinion regrettably turned against these demonstrations because they were seen as unpatriotic. On November tenth of nineteen seventeen, thirty-three women, including Lucy Burns, were arrested and sentenced to jail at the Okaquan Workhouse in Lorton, Virginia. The night of November fourteenth became known as the Night of Terror. When word leaked out about the inhumane treatment, it became the turning point in winning the right to vote. Whereas Women's History Month began as Women's History Week in Santa Rosa, California, in nineteen seventy-eight, it coincided with the International Women's Day on March eighth. The goal of this event was to bring attention to women's historical achievements. Many communities across the country adopted this special recognition, and this movement became so widespread that in nineteen eighty-seven, Congress ultimately designated the month of March as Women's History Month. Whereas the newly-created National Turning Point Suffragist Memorial is located in Lorton, Virginia, and pays tribute to the millions of women who fought more than seven decades to win the women's right to vote. And whereas Kamala Harris made history this year when she was sworn in as Vice President of the United States, she became the first woman, first African-American, first Asian-American to hold this office. Her election coincided with the one-hundredth anniversary of women achieving the right to vote. Now therefore be it resolved that the Fairfax County School Board, on behalf of the Fairfax County Commission for Women and all of its residents, hereby proclaim March twenty twenty-one as Women's History Month, and a time to remember and honor the countless women who fought relentlessly for the rights of all women in our great nation. I so move.
Is there a second? Ms. Darnak Kofax, will you be sent? Thank you, thank you, Ms. Corbett, thank you, Ms. Darnak Kofax. Uh, Ms. McLaughlin, would you like to speak to your resolution?
Very briefly, because as you noted, it was a very comprehensive resolution. But I do want to just simply say that, again, what I find so inspiring, not just about the history of the women's suffrage movement, but again, all of the millions of women who knew that, um, there needed to be change and that they, they stood up against so much, uh, difficulty, um, across this country and across the world. And, uh, we are better off for it, uh, especially, obviously, the eleven of us women sitting here on the School Board, um, who just a hundred and one years ago were told we were not allowed to vote. So I just always find it an exciting resolution, and again, it was an honor to read it tonight.
Thank you, Ms. McLaughlin. Ms. Darnak Kofax, would you like to speak to your second?
Yes, just very briefly, I appreciate Ms. McLaughlin and her words. And, um, I have told this story several times, um, just briefly. The first time I, I was in my first year after I was elected, and I was at a dance studio with my daughter, and it was in, um, Lorton, and it was the first time I came upon the Women's Museum. The Superjet Museum, it was a small space, but I was so moved by the fact about what these women did, what they accomplished, the tortures that they endured. And, um, as I stood there in that moment, it was, as Ms. McLaughlin said, not even having the right to participate in government. And there I was, my first time as an elected official. So I So I was very moved the first time I saw that, and every time I hear this resolution, I believe, I read it one of the first times. But, um, I, um, you know, we, as Ms. McLaughlin said, um, the women sitting on this board have, have many years of history, um, to be thankful for these women and the hard work that they've done, have done in order to allow us to sit at this table tonight. So, thank you, and thank you for letting us read this.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers to this resolution? Seeing none, I will now call for the vote. All those in favor? We have Ms. Darnak Kofax, Ms. Corvitz Sanders, Ms. Eismaheiser, Ms. Pakarski, Ms. Cohen, Ms. McLaughlin, Ms. Keys-Gamara, Ms. Selmesh, Ms. Tolan, Ms. Maron, Mr. Frisch, and myself. That is unanimous. Thank you, Ms. McLaughlin and Ms. Darnak Kofax. The next order of business is citizen participation. Speakers are requested to limit their remarks to not more than three minutes. The school board will not hear statements involving issues that have been scheduled for public hearings, such as capital improvement program, budget, and boundaries. Complaints regarding individual students or school-based employees should be directed to the appropriate school principal or other official. Speakers should refrain from using personally identifiable information in connection with an individual student, with, in connection with an individual student. Speakers are expected to deliver their comments with the decorum and respect appropriate to the conduct of the public's business. Thank you for your cooperation, and thanks for those of you who have elected to speak to us today. We do have ten citizens who have signed up to address the board, and we will also have two video testimonies. Just a reminder to our speakers that once you have finished your remarks, you will be removed from the board's Blackboard site that hosts this meeting. Speakers can continue to watch the live stream meeting on the FCPS website. I will now invite Ms. Mulberg to call our speakers. Ms. Mulberg?
Our first speaker is Thomas Gudrow. Thomas Gudrow. Okay, uh, we'll go to the second speaker. Pratam Nishar Sri Skanda. Forgive me for the pronunciation. Speaker number two. Okay. Um, speaker number three, Joanne Sears.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead, please.
Before my time starts, Dr. Anderson, could I please respectfully ask all school board members to please turn on their cameras so they, I know that they're listening to me?
Please direct your comments, read your testimony, and don't direct comments directly to specific board members. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Joanne Sears, and I am a member of Open FCPS. As a reminder, Open FCPS is a volunteer-led, nonpartisan, ad hoc grassroots coalition of over twenty-three hundred parents and growing who came together last summer because we want to advocate for a choice to return to in-person education five days a week. Tonight, I'm going to address Women's History Month. Let's take a look at present day history and how women are faring during the pandemic. A new academic study, which will appear in the Journal of Gender and Society this spring, shows moms have left the workforce in droves in areas like Fairfax, where remote instruction was the only offering. Because of this inequity, what the school board has done and others like it will have negative consequences on future wages and occupational mobility for decades to come. We know women have suffered the majority, in the majority of this pandemic-related job losses, especially women of color, as they've been forced to leave their jobs to take care of their children. According to the Center for American Progress, they found that nearly sixty-eight percent of black mothers and just over forty-one percent of Latina mothers were the primary or sole breadwinners for their families, compared with thirty-seven percent of white mothers. What does this mean during a global pandemic when school board, this, this school board has ignored science and shuttered schools? It means black and Latino families and children have been put at significant risk because schools remain closed, and mothers have no, have had to reduce their hours or leave the workforce because they need to take care of their children who are not in school. And in some cases, they have unwittingly put their kids in hands of dangerous daycare providers because they've had no choice because they have to go to work. And a cross-section of economists have all noted that a full economic recovery depends on getting parents back to work. It also means that when the history books are written, the Fairfax County School Board will be directly complicit in disrupting the ability for women and women of color to be able to feed their families and educate their children in a safe environment. It means our children have been abandoned, and in many cases may never catch up to, to their peers academically. And what have women learned during this pandemic? We have learned that pandemics only work for the privileged, and this board abandoned mothers who are in the brink of extreme poverty while telling us and our children to be resilient and have some grace. It also means mothers will never forget what this school board has done to our children. We are women of all political persuasions, and we're angry. And we're going to get rid of this school board in twenty twenty-three or beforehand. Women earned the right to vote a century ago, and we will leverage this right to fire this school board. What can we do now? Listen to science and put kids back in school.
Sorry, the speaker's time is now up.
And to Kim Adams, FCPS is not yours. It's for the children.
Our next speaker is Mary Mack Tolar.
Hello.
Go ahead, please, Mary.
Put on your camera.
Oh yeah, it's loading. Can you see me?
Yep, you're all set. Go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you for having me. My name is Mary Mack. I'm in third grade at Chesterbrook. I'm the most joyful person you will ever meet. I might be young, but I can make a difference in this county. That would be some real life woman's history. I found out right before COVID that I was dyslexic. It makes me awesome at solving problems, but typing takes a lot longer. Online school makes it worse, because even though I'm trying really hard, I have to stop and think about things that make absolutely no sense. Like, is this key on a board a little L or a big I? Because on, being online all day makes my brain and eyes tired. It helps when someone reads me emails or directions. I have a helper who comes every day during school. When she is not here and my parents are busy with work, I suffer. I know a lot of kids who have been going to school safely for months. It is not fair that some kids get to go to school every day and some kids have to stay at home. My twin brother is, my twin brother is very good with computers and helps me. But he thinks online school is boring, and my sister in sixth grade says she is suffering and cannot handle it anymore. She used to like school, now she hates it. And she says that it is pushing her over her limits. She wants to move away where she can get her normal school life back. Your job is to do the right thing, and our job as kids is to go to school. And I don't think we're going to school the right way, so please let us go back to school five days a week with our teachers. I wish somebody could give me five reasons why they should keep kids out of school and on a computer from nine AM to three PM, but I don't think anyone can. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Kristi Hudson. Go ahead, please.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, please go ahead.
Okay. I propose strategic goal number, okay. I'm here to propose strategic goal number five, which is five days of in-person school with a teacher in the same room. FCPS has failed to provide this for a year, during which time you've consistently asked to us for grace. Parents afforded you a lot of grace last spring. With the unmitigated disaster known as distance learning, we gave grace. When kids effectively began summer break in March, we gave grace. COVID was new and scary. We had little science or data nor vaccines. One year later, staff are vaccinated. We have data proving schools are, we know transmission is lower inside of schools than out. We know mitigation works. We know the risk to vaccinated people is nil, and those individuals need not quarantine after exposure. We know six feet of distance is not necessary with masks. We shouldn't use March twenty twenty fear to deal with February twenty twenty-one reality. And the reality is, we've sacrificed kids. Five days a week is not a want, it's a need. School is life for kids. It's not just academia, but socialization, clubs, sports, mentorship. Depriving kids of this need for a year has damaged them far worse than the threat of any virus. COVID isn't killing kids. Shuttered schools are. Students in Fairfax County are hurting. They're engaging in horrifying self-harm, swallowing pills, they're cutting themselves, they're suffering life-threatening eating disorders. Many are failing school. Kindergarteners who should be establishing a lifelong love of learning are rebelling and acting out. Figure it out. Strategic goal five, five days with a teacher in the same room. Stop hoarding and repurposing your cares funds. Use them as intended. Buy trailers, tents, lease buildings, rec centers, libraries, whatever, for additional space. Partner with Metro or the National Guard for buses. Use your resources. FCPS is not only wealthy, it's full of really smart people. So stop asking us for grace and start inviting us to the table. Instead of limiting citizen participation at these meetings, take advantage of the parents who are willing to do anything for the children of Fairfax County. We're doctors, lawyers, strategists, military members, and tradespeople. And if you're too proud to ask us for help, ask the Archdiocese of Arlington to borrow their playbook on opening schools five days a week in person. Students are your most important stakeholders. Unfortunately, they don't have union reps.
I'm sorry, Ms. Hudson, your time is up. Thank you.
They only have us.
Next speaker is Emily Wells Bellisle. Emily Wells Bellisle.
I'm here.
Go ahead, please.
Just a moment.
Yeah, I understand that they couldn't hear me on the, uh, the conference.
Thank you. We'll come back to you at the end, sir. Thank you.
All right. Do you want me to mute and silence the audio?
Yes, thank you. Yes, thank you.
Good evening. My name is Emily. My husband, an active duty Air Force officer, and I have three kids. I'm here to speak for my kids as well as the other seventeen thousand Fairfax County military kids. School board members and staff, when you are making strategic plans, do you carefully consider military families like mine and their unique circumstances and challenges? Do you realize that your school closure policies this year have been devastating for military kids, especially for those who are new here or who have a deployed parent? To help illuminate this, I'd like to read some anecdotes from some of my active duty military friends. From one. If schools don't open full-time in the fall, I'm going to push for a hardship reassignment out of this area. My husband and I, both Air Force members, and our three boys, we cannot continue on like this. Another dad writes, I'm active duty military. My wife has a very demanding job, and we're barely holding our heads above water with virtual school for our special needs first grader. This is much more than we can handle. Another. I want to know how many military kids have moved here this summer like mine. It's one thing to go through COVID in an established community with known classmates, friends, learning pods, et cetera. But for the military child who moved here this summer, the isolation is heartbreaking and suffocating. They don't even know what the underside of their schools look like. Both of my children have been in a holding pattern since July. Please keep these children close at heart. Their needs are great and have been completely overlooked. Here's another. If one more person tries to tell me that my kids are resilient, they'll make it up. All kids are going through this. I say no. Not all kids are going through this. All over the country, children are not being treated like FCPS treats my children. All children are not missing in-person schools, sports, activities. We will move again next summer. What will military families do to be able to catch their children up? Will they be thrown in remedial classes, asked to repeat a year? I am sick with worry. Another mom friend. All of our children's friends back in the state of Rhode Island have been in school five days a week. We will be returning there in a year. My children will be so behind. And that's just the academics. The emotional toll this takes on my resilient military kids is almost more than we can bear. And the last one is from my son Luke. We are new to Fairfax as well this summer, and he still has no consistent friendships. His sixth grade class was supposed to make three goals for the new year. He only wrote one. It reads, my goal for twenty twenty-one is to not be so lonely. Please, school board members and staff, provide a system that honors the sacrifices these families make to serve our country, to serve you. Give us the peace of mind that a special community of our children will receive top-notch education inside a school facility.
Next speaker is Teddy Geis. Speaker number seven, Teddy Geis.
Yes, hi, Ms. Mulberg. Okay, thank you. Good evening, school board members. Thank you for the snow date. I'm here tonight to address one problem, a problem that has been ignored for months. I'm talking about the reluctance to provide more mental health resources to students and teachers in their most dire time of need. This pandemic has brought many issues, but this problem seems to be overlooked because it carries a certain stigma, a terrible stigma that many feel they don't need a touch. At Tuesday's meeting, I was disappointed to see little to no support for Ms. Selmesh's amendment to the budget. Her amendment to provide more mental health support staff would be a game changer in how FCPS addresses the needs of students. Because it's sad to hear that many school psychologists are shared between schools, and that estimated ratio per student is more than double what it should be. Recently, I joined a group of high school students working with Ms. Selmesh to address the students' mental health concerns. What I heard was embarrassing. Councilors aren't checking in, students aren't engaged, and when someone misses a class, no teacher or principal bothers to ask what's wrong. Fortunately enough, I don't have this issue at my school, but thousands of other students aren't as fortunate and have bore the brunt of this pandemic without any help from the schools. As I suggested, there needs to be a student mental health public hearing within the next month because we need to hear all the problems students have been facing and what we can do to fix it. It could be as simple as providing more grading safety nets or contracting with tele- mental health service to provide something, but something needs to be done. Lastly, citizen participation needs to be changed. As you've seen, most of the speakers here tonight are with Open FCPS, and surprisingly, I don't see that lady from the union here. But all of you need to stop taking up these slots. You know what it's like to wake up at five forty-five AM? Do you? This Monday, the tent slots were gone in forty-six seconds. Forty-six seconds. While it's admirable that they advocate for others, their issues are no longer a concern anymore since we began in-person instruction this week and are phasing in more over the next few weeks. And thousands of teachers have been vaccinated, but as the CDC director noted, it's not a must. It's nice to be vaccinated, but it's not a must. Students number almost two hundred thousand in this district, and yet we can barely get any slots to speak at these board meetings. So please, Open FCPS FEA, stop hoarding these slots from students because we are the ones whose voices have been overlooked and ignored by everyone. I'm letting, I'm finishing by letting the school board, Open FCPS, and the FEA know that the students most in need of the school board's help don't write, and they can't sign up to speak because there are no slots available. Something needs to change because the students' voice really matters. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Vanessa Hall.
Excuse me? Will I be able to go after, uh?
Yes, you, you will both be called at the end. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, hi. I first wanted to say thank you to Teddy. That was awesome. My son's in your pyramid. So, return to school's been a huge undertaking with unexpected consequences for so many. For hybrid students, the classroom experience will not be the return to normal they hoped for. And for virtual students, many have had their schedules upended despite expectations of a stable learning experience that would keep their family safe. The schedule changes seem simple, but the impact is far-reaching. My own family chose virtual to protect vulnerable family members, but also to maintain stability. Our daughter is in an all-virtual class, so we were surprised by the level of change that began this week. My daughter especially. For her, the return to school changes were the last straw. She broke, and she broke hard. When I heard the hopeless words, "Life isn't worth living, things aren't ever going to get better," from my daughter, I immediately turned to my amazing elementary to ask for help because clearly my daughter was in crisis. The front desk and her teachers quickly had her counselor set up time to talk with her only hours later. The change in my child was instantaneous. Although she's still struggling to handle the constant change and disappointment of a pandemic, she's working hard to be hopeful. I'm speaking now to beg that you ensure that all students have similar access to swift action for crisis and ongoing support for student struggles. Please fully staff mental health care professionals at each school and ensure that they are available to take care of these kids. I know that counselors are regularly relied upon as subs, even in the best of times, and that these counselors may be used to fill the return-to-school staffing gaps. This is unacceptable. Instead, empower these counselors to do their jobs and support the students. Also, please support Nathan Onabundo's proposal for Student Wellness Advisory Committee because it will help students now and far into the future. Empowering students to voice their needs and problems is a huge step towards enabling all of us to address those needs and support student health. Something that helped my daughter is hope. The idea that we're all working together to limit COVID spread so that we can return to a new normal state that hopefully involves in-person school in the fall. Please don't give in to forces who push for five days right now. Instead, work to make sure that we can come back in the fall to safe schools for full in-person learning. We need masks and mitigation to ensure that students can learn and adults can teach without the stress and fear of contracting or transmitting COVID. Please focus on making safe schools, not just open schools. Return to school is a huge change for all. Fully support the counselors, teachers, and staff so that they can support the students and their families during this time because it is not just business as usual. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Olivia Root. Olivia Root.
Hi, I'm here. Hi, my name is Olivia Root, and I'm in the German immersion program at Warner Trent Elementary School. I'm really excited to go back to school in person. Virtual school is not as good as going to school in person because it is hard to talk to my classmates and hard to make new friends. I feel like I have not made any new friends this year. There's someone new in my class, and I feel like we'd be good friends, but I have no way to get to know her. It's also hard for teachers to help me when I have any questions. In person, it's easy for the teachers to notice when you need help and are struggling, and they can walk you through whatever you need help with. They can come to your desk and just see that you need help with something. For example, in school, we're working on a tiny house project, and I've had a lot of questions that I don't think I would have had if we were in person. My teachers are really great, but I just really don't feel like I've learned anything this year. And it's not just in one of my classes, it's in all my classes. My mom goes to the Pentagon every day to work, and my dad has been deployed almost all the time that I've been in school. And so they're not around if I need extra help or have any questions. School is really boring, and I really have to force myself to get up in the morning and go downstairs to turn on my computer. My little brother, who's right behind me, asks me every day when we're going to go back to school. And he is learning German and math, and it's really hard for him to learn that as a first grader. A lot of kids in my neighborhood have switched to private schools so they can at least go to school in person a few days a week. My cousins in Kansas and Connecticut go in person, and they have been going in person for a long time now. My best friend, her brother, live in Germany, and even they go to school in person. And where my grandparents live, the kids haven't gone to school since August and have plexiglass in between their desks. It's really hard to understand why FCPS kids can't go to school, can't go in-person to school. My parents switched my older brothers to private schools so they could at least go to school two times a week in person. They're glad to have that opportunity, but they miss their West Springfield High School friends. My parents are considering sending me to a private school or even to Florida so my brother and I can go to school five days a week. I don't want to move because I really want to go to Irving to continue German and to start acting, and I don't want to move away from my friends. I have already moved a lot because my parents are in the military, and I went to German school before I knew how to speak German. That was really hard, but it seemed not as hard as learning virtual school. Please figure out a way to get us back to school in person five days a week like so many other kids are doing. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker number 10, Mary Ellis. Mac Diarmid.
Hi there, we're here. Can you hear and see us?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, great. I'm giving the entirety of my time to my son, who's a sixth grader here in Fairfax County.
Dr. Brabrand and members of the board, I am 12 years old, and I moved to Northern Virginia the day all the schools shut down. Soon it will be a year since I've seen the inside of a classroom. Meanwhile, my peers and friends across the nation have been in person and thriving. I hear the schools here are closed to keep everyone safe, but I came to speak for all the thousands of kids like me across this district whose voices have been silenced, all in the name of that safety. We are the kids who sit defeated behind a screen for hours every day because we are desperate for human educational interaction. While I have an absolutely amazing teacher who I can't wait to see, no amount of virtual time can substitute for being actually seen and heard and known. For decades, we've known the negative effects of too much screen time for children. We know that kids can become overweight and depressed from too many screens. And yet, here we are, demanding that children, some as young as five, be forced to sit behind a screen for hours per day. I am one of those kids, and you are not keeping us safe. You are actively harming us. Test scores and mental health are down for many students. So why are you locking down schools for all but two days when in-school transmission rates among masked teachers and students are and always have been lower than transmission by people out in the country? In fact, there's a recent Mayo Clinic study that shows that mask-wearing even spaces closer than six feet is almost flawless in stopping COVID transmission. The fact is that each of you school board members is safer walking into a class of masked students and teachers than you are out in the community, going to a restaurant or to a grocery store. So the truth is, none of this adds up. Masks in schools work. They protect our teachers, staff, and students. And on top of that, our teachers have been vaccinated, and many teachers want to be 100% in-person with us, not doing concurrent learning. So that's where you come in. We need you to show up by being the voice for all of us who have been voiceless. We aren't asking you to make everyone go in person. What we are asking is that you give kids like me, who are desperate to be in class, the chance to be in class five days a week. You can make this happen, and here's one way. The most recent surveys in our county indicate that 50% of students and teachers want to be in person, while 50% of teachers and students want to be virtual. So an easy solution is to let the 50% of teachers and students who want to be in person do that for five days a week, and let the other 50% of students and teachers who want to be virtual do so five days a week. Then you substitute teachers for any classes where there is not an even split. This plan removes the stress of concurrent learning on teachers and gives both groups what they really want. Honestly, there are a million ways to make it work. We kids have trusted you. And by not finding solutions, you are losing our trust. Unprecedented times call for unprecedented creativity. So let's do this.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Thomas Kudrow.
Good evening. I recommend that the school board not approve the strategic plan reports. Goals 1 through 4 is written and attached to today's agenda details. The strategic plan reports presented to the school board are completely disconnected from FCPS's strategic reality. The Fiscal Year 2020 School Board Strategic Concerns summarized in the Caring Culture, Resource Stewardship, Premier Workforce, and Student Success Plan reports is out of touch with current strategic imperatives. In all, there are over 20 school board strategic concerns listed, yet none of them state that the school board should be to in-person learning five days a week as soon as possible. Only one of the concerns speaks to COVID's safety concerns. Instead, I would urge the school board to prioritize the following three strategic concerns over everything else. One, FCPS returns students five days a week to in-person learning as soon as possible. Two, return FCPS performance to pre-COVID levels academically and culturally. And three, repair damaged relationships among FCPS students, families, and the community. Repairing damaged relationships will take serious work. FCPS should not unilaterally change IP services to suit the needs of FCPS at the expense of special education students. FCPS should not predetermine services to fit a desired virtual format. Virtual education does not meet the needs of all students and is not a free, appropriate public education for everyone. And lastly, FCPS should reestablish the Family Engagement Survey and address the impact of hearing and rejecting families' feedback this past year. Most importantly, FCPS should make it a strategic priority to overcome all obstacles that prevent FCPS from returning students five days a week to in-person learning. Teachers teaching in the classroom deserve the full support of the school board, FCPS leadership, and the community. And they deserve a resilient plan that has contingency other than just sending everybody home or hiring more classroom monitors. Strategies that prioritize everything prioritize nothing. The written strategy works so hard to be inclusive that it fails to communicate priorities and ignores the most important issues facing FCPS today and the years to come. FCPS must return students to a classroom five days a week. FCPS must return educational quality to its previous nationwide leadership levels. And FCPS must address tensions between FCPS, the students, and FCPS families. Any other strategy fails in the face of these compelling needs. Please reject the strategy. Thank you.
Thank you. Our final speaker is Pratham Meshevar Srikanth.
Yeah, yeah, hi. My name's Pratham, and I'm a senior attending Fairfax High School this year throughout the virtual learning period. I'd like to remind everyone that Open FCPS is a group with various student members like me, many of whom have spoken here today. I'd like to start off by stating that this past year hasn't been an easy year for anyone, not the school administrators or the school's students or their parents. Last March, we didn't know how to handle the pandemic, and on the swing of a pendulum, FCPS shifted into full shutdown. But now a year has passed, and it's high time that that pendulum swung back in the other direction. Fatality rates for all age groups are fairly minimal, and I'd like everyone here to look at the current case-to-death ratio. It is high time that we reopen, and FCPS's fourth strategic goal states that it is to ensure student success, but virtual learning is an inefficient way to accomplish it. Here are my following concerns. First, I feel that grades right now are being intentionally inflated. An example of this would be the standard that unturned-in assignments have a minimum grade of 50, a standard which is continuously demotivating students' efforts to learn. Second, students' actual learning of the required content is diminishing as with the increase of an opportunity for them to cheat on assignments and tests. In addition, many students aren't even able to effectively pay attention in class due to distractions like pets, siblings, and their parents and other ongoing daily occurrences in the household. Finally, and perhaps the most alarming concern, is the rise in obesity, mental health issues, and all the other health issues which are occurring. The various negative effects of long-term isolation in humans is well-documented. And me and my friends and I personally have all felt like we're stuck in this continuous cycle of online assignments and staring at a screen day in and day out. And we've just lost our motivation to learn and care about what is happening in schools right now. But those are just a few criticisms of virtual learning. And I think I speak for everyone when I say, for many people, when I say it is clearly an ineffective way for us to learn and hinders students' abilities to understand what's going on. And we can't stand idly by while that happens. Students' education is highly foundational, and it's best depicted by a building that we build upon each year and is supported by the core subjects which we are taught. And we can continue to build upon that building each year with more and more knowledge, but if even one layer of that foundation is weak, the whole structure is going to inevitably collapse. In other words, if the goal of our educational system is to truly ensure student success, we have to, and that might be in college, their future careers, or some position external to the labor force, we need to switch back to a model that provides broad mental and physical health and academic.
We have two videos, one from Robert Rigby and one from Tina Williams.
Good evening, school board members, Dr. Brabrand and senior staff. My name is Robert Rigby. I am co-president of FCPS Pride, which is an organization for LGBTQ staff and parents. I want to talk about the strategic goals of preserving resources and fostering a caring culture. You may have seen, as I did, the screenshot this week of the folks aiming to find teachers who were virtual because of an ADA request and scour their social media to find evidence of them living their best life. I know a lot of teachers. I don't know any who have cloned an ADA so that they can live a life of rivalry and secret. I know a lot of teachers who are terrified for this health, for their health. There is this whole myth, a hateful myth, that there are droves of teachers who have claimed ADA accommodations so that they don't have to teach in person and that they're going to stay home and monitors will watch their class. It's really a very small number of people, 800 out of 25,000 full-time positions. And the people on ADA really need to be on ADA. Folks have been targeting teachers since the beginning of the year for things they say on social media, scouring their social media and targeting them. They've targeted LGBTQ teachers, many of my members. They've targeted minority teachers. They've targeted teachers with disabilities. They've targeted teachers for simply not keeping their political opinion secret during the election. We really, you as educational leaders, really need to preserve the resources of your staff and to defend your staff because the environment has become really, really hateful. I know it's been hateful for many of you, but many individual teachers who haven't done much of anything are being targeted. The administrators are being emailed. People are trying to get them fired or disciplined. It's gotten really bad. And my organization can do something to defend teachers and to support them. But you as educational leaders, I think, really need to speak up and speak out and defend your staff. We need you in this time. Thank you.
Good evening. I want to wish you all a happy Social Worker Appreciation Week. As you all have noted in this week's work session, FCPS staff are taking home less money in their paycheck today than they were this time last year. FCPS staff are working around the clock to provide high-quality education for students in our community. It would be inexcusable to require our school staff to go above and beyond and then turn around and deny these very same workers their much-deserved step increases and cost-of-living adjustments. We appreciate the school board's decision in recent weeks to improve on its initial employee compensation proposal, and we urge this board to provide all FCPS employees with step increases and market-scale adjustments in this budget. Just last week, Governor Northam announced that the state revenue reforecast is far better than expected. The Senate has proposed giving all school employees a 3% raise, and the House has proposed a 5% raise. At the same time, all neighboring school districts around are providing employees with a step increase, and many are providing a market-scale adjustment as well. Frankly, we are losing our competitive edge. Frankly, we are losing our competitive edge. When the cost of living in Fairfax is higher and the compensation is lower than neighboring districts, our members are starting to question if FCPS is the right place for them to work. We appreciate that FCPS has discussed giving all FCPS employees a market scale adjustment, but employees deserve their step increases too. If FCPS moves forward with the proposed budget, this would be the second year in a row that employees go without their expected step increases. To ensure that all FCPS staff at every level of the pay scale are compensated fairly, we urge this board to adopt a budget that honors staff's expected step increase and a market scale adjustment. It's simple. FCPS staff are professionals and we need to be treated as professionals. Valuing and respecting staff means compensating them fairly by ensuring that they receive step increases they expect to make when they accept employment with FCPS. We will not be able to attract and retain a premier workforce if we don't take these steps. FCPS educators have been here for students throughout the pandemic and before that, well before that, and we want to continue to be here. We ask you to demonstrate that you respect and appreciate FCPS employees by treating them as professionals and by adopting a budget that provides steps and market scale increases they deserve. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Molberg. I do believe that was the end of our citizens' citizen participation, correct?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, we are now up to our student representative matters and I'll call on Mr. Anubud.
Hi, Dr. Anderson. I'm gonna see if I can get my camera to work. My Wi-Fi's been good, so give me a sec.
Of course.
Can you see me? There we go.
Yes, sir. Good to see you.
Nice to see you too, Dr. Anderson. Um, and same with the entire community. Um, Dr. Braybrand, leadership staff, and the school board. I have a couple of different things that I hope to speak about um, during my student rep matters in this particular portion. I'll, I'll try to keep brief, but there's a couple of different things I want to touch on. Um, the first thing I want to speak to though is the calendar discussion. I think from what I've heard so far, from where I sit, there has to be a better way to compromise. I'm of the mindset that recovering student learning loss is the single most important priority the school system faces as we talk about returning to in-person schooling and outlining, um, the upcoming school year. If the leadership team believes that extra week of summer programming that Option C provides is a tool to help begin recovering some of that learning loss, then I believe that extra week is absolutely vital. However, we have done so much work to ensure that the community feels heard and seen throughout this calendar process. And it seems particularly detrimental to fall back on that messaging at this stage in the game. To me, it seems impossible that we can't find a way to end school a week earlier and honor the extra holidays laid out in Options A and B. I don't know, maybe we can remove seven or so of our snow days or something. We rarely use them anyway. The current situation is being billed as an either-or. Either we prioritize the recovery of learning loss or we honor the work of the calendar committee. Something tells me it doesn't have to be an either-or and it would be really amazing if the leadership, leadership was able to come back with a more robust compromise. As a student, I see through my friends the near impossible choices that students are sometimes forced to make as a result of our previous practice of holiday recognition. So I know the importance of the inclusion that Options A and B offers. However, I also recognize that in a community as diverse as ours, we will likely never reach the goal of being as inclusive as is actually necessary in situations like these. I don't believe that that doesn't mean we don't try to try by taking steps like moving towards calendars that resemble Options A and B, but rather, that means that our ultimate goal as a school system, a system as large and diverse as ours, a system that serves countless diverse populations, our ultimate goal must be to reach a place where grace, understanding, and flexibility is commonplace within each of our classrooms. A place where it isn't such a horrifying thought for at least some of our students to miss a day or two of especially for religious observances. Moving back into buildings doesn't have to mean moving back into the pressure cooker environment that FCPS all too happen, all too often is to cultivate. Those are my thoughts regarding the calendar conversation. Switching gears a bit, I am super excited to announce that the Inner Word Bookstore is now live. I want to give a super duper special thank you to the Bookworms, to Bookworm Central, a local company, for helping me realize my goal of helping our school system find creative ways to get, um, books into the hands of our young learners and our most disadvantaged learners. Especially to the company's leader, Ms. Radhika Bhaj. Um, thank you for all your help throughout the process, as well as FCPS leadership for making this possible. Specifically, Mr. Jay Garant, um, and our comms office. If you would like to donate, if you would like to donate a book or two, um, speaking to the FCPS community now. Um, I will be posting the link to my Twitter account sometime shortly, so you go check it out there. The, the account is NJO Nathan one five six. It'll be live there sometime shortly. I was switching gears again a bit. I want to talk about very briefly, I just want to take a brief moment to publicize and across our school system we're doing is to bring to class, senior classes at our high school, high schools in FCPS together. Um, this particular issue is close to me as I'm a senior myself, so I want to give special thanks to the students I'm working with on the Senior Planning Committee, as well as principals, assistant principals, parents, and leadership pouring into our seniors. As we move towards graduation and everyone starts to see the things our system is doing to celebrate seniors, I just want the community to recognize the amazing people, students, staff members, and leadership that is being some of. Lastly, um, very briefly, I want to touch on something that I touched on in my last student representative matters because I think it's extremely important. We all need to continue working together as a community to bring the temperature down. As I said in the last meeting, it is so, so very evident to me that students are deriving behavioral cues from all of the adults in their lives. In a time full of so much natural change and stress, anxiety, last thing young people need is for the adults in the room to pile onto that. It's not one person or it's not coming from one place, but it's collective angst that is built from all of the, the natural that this change is brought on all of us. I see exhibiting, exhibiting it everywhere I go and I know that students are deriving some of their stress from those, from those places and I just, I, I urge just to continue to find ways to work to bring the temperature down because it hasn't been easy on students. Students are suffering and the last thing these caring adults need, um, is to pile onto that stress. So I encourage all of us to continue to find ways to help our students, our young people cope with the amount of change that's going on because change is a natural part of life and we're getting real life experience, young people having to deal with this kind of change. So I think that that's so important to me and I'll say it because I see it every single
Mr. Anubud, I think we lost your feed. If you are able to log back on, then we'll allow you to go ahead and finish, but I'm going to move on to the next agenda item at this point.
Dr. Anderson, I was done.
Oh, yes, you're back. Go ahead, please.
I was done.
Go ahead and complete your statement, Nathan.
That was it, Dr. Anderson. I think my feed cut off right on time. The Wi-Fi.
Okay, well, that actually worked out.
That was everything. Thank you.
Of course, and thank you, Nathan. Uh, at this point, I would like to call on Mr. Frisch for a recommendation for Mosby Woods Elementary School renaming. Mr. Frisch.
Uh, thank you, uh, Dr. Anderson. I move that the name of Mosby Woods Elementary School be changed to Mosaic Elementary School. I further move that the superintendent be directed to change the name by the beginning of the 2021-2022 school year.
Is there a second? Thank you, Ms. Eisner Heiser. Mr. Frisch, would you like to speak to your motion?
Yes, thank you. Um, when we first set out to rename Mosby Woods Elementary School, I was cautioned that school name changes, even those that seem like no brainers, are never easy. Um, things get complicated very quickly, I was told. In my view, the one thing that has never been in question during this process is the fact that Confederate John Singleton Mosby's name should not remain in a place of honor within Fairfax County Public Schools. In a letter last year, many of Mosby's descendants, his great-great and great-great-grandchildren endorsed the board's effort to change the school's name, writing, quote, "In the interest of furthering the mission you are already engaging in of maintaining an inclusive environment for all students, we hope that your institution will follow the precedent set by Justice High and change the name of your school to something that does not include the name of our ancestor." "In the FCPS strategic plan, we commit to fostering a responsive, caring, and inclusive culture. And we cannot live up to that standard when students attend schools named in honor of the Confederacy." And so this board voted to change the name of Mosby Woods Elementary School. As part of that process, we offered names for consideration and commenced with community meetings and public hearings. When engaging the community, it is never easy to tell whether the fraction of the community that shows up for a meeting or, uh, on any, on any given day is representative of the views of the broader community. As school board members, we struggle with this reality every day in our work. We work hard to do our best to reach out and to listen. During the initial community engagement process, those participating largely coalesced around the name Mosaic, arguing that the name was a, uh, repudiation of the school's current namesake encapsulated the diverse student body the school serves. None of the other names offered in that initial round received traction. As the board prepared to make a final decision on a name for Mosby Woods in December, I pumped the brakes after hearing concerns that the name Mosaic might be geographically confusing to some because of the shopping district. Because no other name had consensus, I opted to delay renaming Mosby Woods in favor of offering additional names for consideration, holding a third community meeting, with the hope that this would encourage more community engagement. We had our final community meeting on Tuesday evening and twice as many people participated. Uh, while there was more interest in these new options than there had been at our previous meeting, it was clear that the only name considered thus far that attracted significant support was Mosaic. And few members of the school community shared the geographic concern. As one parent told me, "Mosaic is not perfect, but no option is. Why should it be rejected out of hand for its few shortcomings when other names are not?" I spent the last two days on the phone, almost all day, talking with constituents and my colleagues to try and build some sort of consensus on this topic. I know that Mosaic does not represent the direction that everyone would like us to take. I am disappointing some with this motion. I know that this process has not been perfect, but I also know that mosaics, as a symbol, can send a powerful message. During one of our public hearings, we heard the words of some Mosby Woods sixth graders who said, quote, "We are all different cultures and then when we are put together, we are a beautiful picture where we all belong." They also said a mosaic is a metaphor for their school because they, quote, "Our people who come in different shapes and sizes and we embrace and celebrate our difference. In a mosaic, every tile is different, but we celebrate unity." It is in the spirit of that unity that I have sought to build, uh, I've sought to build unity during these deliberations and with this motion. I am, if I'm being honest, I have not always succeeded, but I have worked hard to listen to our community and my colleagues so that I could encourage agreement and find commonality if possible. What we choose to name a school matters. Names command power. That is why so many schools were named after the Confederacy when racists pursued a policy of massive resistance to keep Virginia schools segregated. Whether rename a school after a symbol of unity and diversity or after an inspirational figure from a marginalized community who fought oppression or succeeded against all odds, we are doing the right thing when we work with the community to rename schools that once honored the Confederacy. Mosaic is not perfect. Mosaics are not perfect, but the irregular pieces of stone, glass, and ceramic that make mosaics result in something special. That is my hope for Mosby Woods community. That is, the name change results in something special, not only for them, but for future generations of children who walk the halls of this very special school. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Frisch. Ms. Eisner Heiser, would you like to speak to your second?
Yeah, sorry. Um, I would very much like to speak to my second, so thank you. And I just wanted to start by saying that I'm really honored to second the motion to change the name of Mosby Woods Elementary School to Mosaic Elementary School. And first, I would like to thank my colleague, Providence District School Board Member Carl Frisch, for bringing forward this change. I'm grateful for his efforts to promote an inclusive and welcoming culture in our schools and ensure that inclusive and welcoming culture is reflected in the names of our schools. I'm also incredibly appreciative of the hard work that he has done to engage the community, including the descendants of the Mosby family, and to ensure that all voices are heard and consensus is built. I know it has not been easy for him to try to build consensus around this name, to try to, to listen to all stakeholders and to really try to center all voices. And I appreciate his efforts because as he said, in no matter what happens, somebody will be disappointed. But I very much appreciate the hard work that he has done. This school, like others, was named in the height of massive resistance to integration. And it is a very worthy goal to replace its name with one of a groundbreaking person of color. That's the reason why when we, this board renamed Lewis High School, I was thrilled with the name John R. Lewis for that school. What a more fitting name for a school once named for Confederate general than one of the leaders of the civil rights movement in the 1960s. But there are limited schools to be renamed and it is clear that while the past of Fairfax County was massive resistance to integration, our future is one that celebrates and embraces our many cultures. In short, our future is one of multiculturalism, where many diverse cultures come together and many diverse people come together to make a beautiful whole. It is a difficult task to balance those many voices and nearly an impossible solution to find that pleases everyone. I think the name Mosaic is a good compromise between those who would like to very understandably, again, overtly reject the massive resistance to integration by picking an African-American and those who would like to see value in recognizing all of our diverse communities. It is a difficult balance and I appreciate Mr. Frisch's desire to try to find that balance. As the Minority Student Oversight Achievement Committee stated in their letter to this board yesterday, "It is important that our school renaming process is inclusive, open, and transparent with an effort to develop a broader and deeper understanding of our shared community history, reflect community values and beliefs, and have community consensus." Indeed, this letter fits with the School Board Policy 8170.7, which describes the policy around school renaming that the school board may consider a change in the name of an existing school facility to ensure an inclusive and respectful learning environment. Now, word inclusive comes up quite a bit. And I know Mr. Frisch takes these words and values to heart and it is clear that inclusivity and the community values are one and the same. Inclusivity is clear in what I saw in the community consensus. In reviewing the community feedback, the community, the words inclusive, community, and unity appeared many times. There also seemed to be a community coalescence around the name Mosaic, although as Mr. Frisch said, it is difficult to get as broad of a community to engage as school members would like. But again, community, inclusive, unity. That is the name Mosaic itself, a beautiful multifaceted pattern consisting of many materials and colors and shapes, unified to make a beautiful whole. What could be a better reflection of the multicultural future of Fairfax County? A future that is already in existence at Mosby Woods School, a school where students come from forty countries and speak twenty-eight different languages, where students with Asian backgrounds are nearly thirty percent of the school population, Hispanic students just over seventeen percent, Caucasian students thirty-eight, and African-American students nearly seven percent. In short, this school is already a beautiful mosaic of cultures and backgrounds, which is exactly what Fairfax County has become. While we all firmly reject Fairfax County's path of massive resistance to integration and it is very important to acknowledge the harm that, that has done, it is also important to send to all our voices and communities. We should celebrate that Mosaic is representative of the future of our county. We are in the midst of writing a new history of Fairfax County, a history of a beautifully multicultural society. It's a history that we get to write. What a better name than Mosaic than to start a new history, where we are all seen as different and multifaceted, where each piece is created and shines differently, but all the pieces come together to create a togetherness, a unity. come together to create a togetherness, a unity full of unique discovery. That is a future of America, and that is a present and future of Fairfax County. It is not a perfect name. Like Mr. Frisch said, there is no perfect mosaic, but it is a name that is looking forward. And so I'm honored to second the motion to rename Mosby Woods School to Mosaic. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Eisner Heizer. I see that we have a few board members wanting to speak to this motion, and we will start with Ms. Cohen.
Thank you so much, and I also want to echo very much my appreciation for Mr. Frisch in being able to share the struggle of trying to get this right. And it's been awe-inspiring to watch. I know how much effort he's put into it, and I'm really appreciative of it. I just wanted to say when we started this process, Mosaic was maybe my least favorite of the names that had been circulated. I'll confess that especially on a day when perseverance just landed on Mars, I was pretty partial to a certain NASA mathematician. We had some incredible choices for the new name of the school, and we also had some incredible advocacy. That incredible advocacy came from some of our very youngest voices, from their parents and their teachers. The emails, calls, and breakout groups that I was in all had one common theme: Mosaic. The most moving advocacy came from our students who, very proud of the diversity of their school, referenced that their school was like a patchwork quilt, that together they made a beautiful mosaic. The truth is that the mosaic that is the former Mosby Woods Elementary School is made up of future mathematicians and astronauts who will chart a course to destinations unknown, doctors who will help cure diseases, politicians who will make laws to right the wrongs of today, activists who will fight for true equity, and teachers who will grow our future leaders. Our students at Mosaic Elementary School will break barriers. They will make this world a better place. And they're starting that journey by learning a valuable lesson, that their voices matter, that they can affect change. So thank you for our students who reminded me once again that there is Catherine Johnson, a Rebecca Crumpler, a May Jemison, a Patsy Link, a Sylvia Mendez, a Barbara Rose Johns, and a Mary McBride in every single school in FCPS. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Cohen. Ms. McLaughlin?
Thank you. I really just wanted to take a moment to express my appreciation to my neighboring Magisterial District colleague, Crawford. Not only do I deeply appreciate the great care and consideration you've given to this process from start to finish, but your words tonight were eloquent, inspiring, and I know they touched the hearts of so many who are listening tonight. I am excited and hopeful for your community and the excitement they will feel in a name that captures how beautiful it is to bring people from so many different backgrounds and cultures and experiences and create what we know the beauty that mosaics are. So just wanted to really give those extra words of support and appreciation, and they do know, having gone through these name changes previously, they do invoke a lot of emotion. And as elected officials, it's our best efforts to try and bring unity and healing to this. And so again, Mr. Frisch, well done, and look forward to supporting your request.
Thank you very much, Ms. McLaughlin. Ms. Marin?
Hi, yes. I think Mosaic is really quite a fitting name. I think it inspires inclusivity and coming together. I think that it's, you know, it is near the center nearby, but many of our schools have geographical references like that, and I think it actually helps people to locate the school in our minds about our vast county. You know, we have over 100 elementary schools, and relating it to where it is geographically can really help with the presence of a school. So I think that that is actually a bit of an asset. I think that, you know, not all of our schools need to be named after people. It sounds like the community wants this particular name, and so the will of the community should really shine through. And I also, you know, do applaud Mr. Frisch for his due diligence. Once again, the ongoing, you know, work and counsel he's tried to get and the input, I know this is personal for him, and, you know, I think that integrity is doing what's right, even no matter who or how many people are looking. And this is the right thing to do to change this name. We don't want to have racist names on our schools. Our children deserve way better than that. So thank you very much, and I look forward to supporting the name change to Mosaic Elementary.
Thank you very much, Ms. Marin. Ms. Corbett Sanders?
Yes, thank you, Chairman Anderson. I want to first thank the maker of the motion for initiating the process of renaming Mosby Woods Elementary School. The work that Mr. Frisch and Ms. Keys-Gamar have done to change the name of a school named after a leader of the Confederacy is greatly appreciated and was a much-needed change. Mr. Frisch has repeatedly reminded us that the renovation of the school provides an excellent opportunity to rebrand the school, to reflect the values of One Fairfax, and I appreciate this initiative and his motivation to do so. I know that Mr. Frisch and Ms. Keys-Gamar have met with community members on numerous occasions and certainly appreciate that although we've made progress in how we approach renaming buildings, more work needs to be done on how we approach initiatives such as this. We need to develop guidelines on what our objectives are in school naming at each level, elementary, middle, and high school. Is it to associate a school with a location, or is it to evoke an emotion or provide an inspirational role model to further understanding of our One Fairfax Equity Policy? We need to have a clear process of informing the public about the names being considered and how they and individual board members can provide input, engage, and engage in the process. In principle, I do not have a problem with naming a school to reflect a geographic location. Most of the schools in my entity are just that, and frankly, the first school renamed in Fairfax County was named after a geography after the community and the board struggled to agree to a name. And when South County was built, a similar situation occurred. My predecessor wanted to name the building after a suffragette who had been incarcerated at Lorton, which we heard about that tonight in our Women's History Recognition. Fortunately, the community didn't coalesce around that name. But my concern about the proposed name of Mosaic is that the name is associated with a different geographic region than that where the current school is located. So I appreciate that Mosaic evokes strong sentiments and emotions, and it's a great name, but I cannot support the name tonight. So I, but I do want to recognize the excellent, hard work that all of the board members have put into this. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Corbett Sanders. Next speaker is Ms. Bukarski.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson. I just wanted to take the opportunity to thank my colleague for bringing this name forth. I know he has worked extremely hard with the community to listen to them, to do the outreach, to really find and put his pulse on what the desires are of the neighborhood and the community which this school serves, and he has been extremely committed to that and having a transparent process and also working with all of us. So I want to thank you. I am happy to support you in this new name. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bukarski. Ms. Denrot Kofax? I think you're on mute. No, you do not have any sound. Why don't you log in again, and we'll be sure to capture your comments? Are there any other speakers while we await for Ms. Denrot Kofax to log in? Seeing none, I will quickly take a turn and then turn it over to her once she reappears. I appreciate the comments that have been shared by many of my colleagues, and my sentiments are the same. I do understand, and I've seen the work that Mr. Frisch has put towards ensuring that he gathered community input, that he spoke to school board members, and I know the last two days have been very, very busy for him. Having said that, I appreciate his effort. I know that it was hard to come into this place where he was listening to the community, but I would have to be honest to say that I feel like we miss an opportunity here to really make a statement. It is one thing to be responsive to our community, and I love that he did that, but I also want to be sure that we are making statements, particularly when we are renaming schools that were signals and symbols of oppression. Having said that, I will be supportive of Mr. Frisch because I want to be supportive of the community and the feedback they provided to him, but I feel like we miss an opportunity to really make a statement in our community here regarding our values. So that's it for me, and I see that Ms. Denrot Kofax has come back in. Let's check your mic, and then we will go to Ms. Tolan after you.
Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am, you are on.
All right, I will keep my camera off, and I will be brief. I just do want to thank Mr. Frisch and Ms. Keys-Gamar for their hard work in renaming one of the last remaining schools that has Confederate ties directly to that person, to the name of a person. I know how very difficult the renaming process is, and there is rarely a perfect solution. But I do want to say that I do appreciate the idea of a mosaic because is what moved me when I did hear the speakers from the elementary school, and they talked about what an inclusive and welcoming culture they have, and a mosaic is a combination of diverse elements. So I will be supporting Mr. Frisch's advocacy and Ms. Eisner Heizer in continuing in allowing them to change the name of Mosby Woods to Mosaic Elementary School.
Thank you. Ms. Tolan?
Yes, thank you. I don't really have any new comments coming at the end of a long list of very eloquent speakers. You know, we've heard about, you know, very eloquently, the picture of what a mosaic really represents and what the community was thinking when they chose this name. And so I just wanted to, you know, log in my support for my colleague, Mr. Frisch. He and I have had many conversations over our months on the school board about public engagements and the importance of, you know, listening to the public and gathering that input and how to gather that input. And so I applaud his moving forward with this name change this evening and look forward to supporting this motion.
Thank you very much. Seeing that there are no other speakers, I will now call for the vote. We have on our screen, I believe, was it posted, Ms. Mulberg?
Oh, Madam Chair.
Oh, I'm so sorry, Ms. Keys-Gamar. I did not see your hand there. Please go ahead and take your turn.
Thank you. I'm going to begin my comments by saying thank you to my colleague, Mr. Fritz, for allowing me to work with him through this up until today. And I will apologize to my colleagues because there has been some language that I have heard through this process that does not allow me to support this recommendation. So I will go through that history. I know that my colleagues have already talked about what Mosby Raiders meant and how he was indeed a Confederate general that intentionally terrorized Black children to try to keep them from getting an education. We began this process knowing that we wanted to remove that name, and initially, there were some recommendations, particularly supported by staff, that included this name. I had some discussions with Mr. Fritz, and he wanted to consider women of color in particular because a number of our schools don't have the benefit of that history. Those names were May Jemison, Sylvia Mendez, Patsy Mink, and Rebecca Lee Crumpler. This represents an array of people from our community, great Americans who have taken significant steps to improve the lives of all Americans, Hispanic, Hispanic women, Asian women, African-American women. As I attended all the meetings, I heard not only the push for Mosaic, which I know was a staff favorite, but the language I continued to hear, which is hard for me to repeat, basically said, and we received it in a letter just this past day, "These people don't represent us." I heard it more than once. These people don't represent us, and I heard it from staff. That was hurtful to me because there is no denial that these are great Americans. In their explanations, and I've spoken to community members who had, at least one that had that view until our conversation, and they said, "We have Asians and Hispanics, and we have so many people. That's why these people don't represent us, and Mosaic is so much better." But I have to question whether we have truly been impacted by the intentional steps of the Daughters of the Confederacy who made sure that people of color, particularly African-Americans, were not included in our history books. I'd like to be allowed to finish. Because that statement has been repeated by staff and unfortunately leadership. And the reason that I can't support this is because when we have that view, it implicitly impacts how children see themselves. I have spent my life fighting to remove barriers to education and any type of barrier for children. And when we have staff coming forward saying, "They don't represent us. We need some very serious professional development to make sure that when we look at Americans, we see ourselves, and we permit our children to see themselves, no matter where that person comes from." And so unfortunately, because of this repeated theme, I cannot support this, but I ask our superintendent to please work with whomever we need to, to make sure that these attitudes that could easily be transferred to our students do not cause harm and limit the way our children see themselves. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Keys-Gamar. Ms. Somesh?
Thank you. And, you know, I will echo gratitude for Mr. Frisch, who has worked hard to bring forward the community's input and elevate voices that throughout this process, you know, were not included in the beginning and repeated efforts to make this happen. I think he mentioned a point in the beginning about what community outreach looks like. That's going to be a continued conversation on our board. We have this every time we bring any issue, where we think about what does it mean when we say we have heard from the community? And Mr. Frisch led with that, and that's an ongoing conversation we need to think about as a board. And to acknowledge some of what Ms. Keys-Gamar mentioned, there have been conversations that have been very difficult, loaded with implicit biases and challenges. With that understanding, I would urge my colleagues that the first step be for us to take our own equity training, and I look forward to that opportunity now that we have an equity member on the leadership team to guide us through that. But today was an opportunity to say, we live in a community, we live in a county that speaks over 200 languages, that has people from all walks of life, and that Mosaic is a way to bring everyone together under that name. And it's a way to bring a name that, as some colleagues mentioned, brings healing to the community, brings... brings some unity and allows us to reflect on the process of how we do this, on what conversations need to be had and frankly, on what we need to teach our kids through the curriculum and beyond to grow from this together. So I'm grateful to Mr. Frisch for bringing this. It's been a long road and, you know, full of challenges. But I think he did the right thing and I think we, you know, we move forward from today having learned many lessons and hopefully with the excitement that we have a school now where we can celebrate the identities of all kids coming in. And hopefully we'll honor that moving forward, that that name be used to cherish that piece of that school community and what it represents for all faces of Fairfax. So thank you again, Mr. Frisch and I'm pleased to support this name.
Thank you very much, Ms. Omeish. At this time, Ms. Mulberg, will you please place the motion on the screen? And I will call for the vote. All in favor of the motion on the screen at this time, please raise your hands. Ms. Keys-Gamara? Thank you. Ms. Marin, Ms. Bukarski, Ms. McLaughlin, Mr. Frisch, Ms. Cohen, Ms. Seismar Heiser, Ms. Tolan, Ms. Omeish, Ms. Darnak Kofax and myself. That will be 10. Please lower your hands at this point. All against? Ms. Corbett Sanders and Ms. Keys-Gamara. The motion will pass. I now call Ms. Bukarski for the motion to award the contract to the University of Wisconsin. Ms. Bukarski?
Thank you. I'm just, sorry, I'm pulling that up. Here we go. I move that the school board approve the contract as detailed in the agenda item.
Thank you. Is there a second? Ms. Corbett Sanders, thank you. Ms. Bukarski, would you like to speak to your motion?
No, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Corbett Sanders, would you like to speak to your second?
I would just like to briefly inform the public that this is the award of the contract for the WEDA assessments for English language learners. And I think this is especially appropriate tonight when we recognize Foreign Language Week. So I'm happy to second.
Thank you. Any other speakers to this motion? Seeing none, I will now call for the vote. All in favor? We have Ms. Corbett Sanders, Ms. Bukarski, Ms. Marin, Ms. Darnak Kofax, Ms. Tolan, Ms. McLaughlin, Mr. Frisch, Ms. Cohen, Ms. Seismar Heiser and myself. That is 10. Please lower your hands. All of those opposed? None in opposition? All of those abstaining? Ms. Omeish, I'm so sorry. Madam Clerk, I believe I missed one vote because I shared, I think I called 10 names in favor and one abstaining. Whose vote did I miss?
You didn't miss.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Who is speaking at this point? Ms. Keys-Gamara, could you please provide us with a voice vote?
I am in favor.
Thank you. That would be 11 in favor and one abstention. The motion carries. We will now call Ms. Tolan for a motion to award a contract to George Mason University. Ms. Tolan?
I move that the school board approve the contract as detailed in the agenda item.
Do we have a second? Thank you, Ms. Cohen. Ms. Tolan, would you like to speak to your motion?
Yes, just briefly, please. This contract is for participation in the Early Identification Program with George Mason University. It's a multi-year program for students who will be the first in their family to attend college. The Early Identification Program is sponsored, as I mentioned, in partnership with George Mason University. Students from grades seven through 12 are welcomed into the program. And to date, the Early Identification Program is located in the following Fairfax County Public Schools. Glasgow Homes, Luther Jackson, Lanier, Poe, Sandburg and Whitman Middle Schools, Amandale, Fairfax, Falls Church, Justice, Mount Vernon and West Potomac High Schools. The program includes supports such as financial aid, information and guidance, scholarship assistance, college application assistance, college entrance exam preparation, access to academic resources such as the Khan Academy, career and job resources. And I would like to recommend that we continue this contract with George Mason University to offer these students, offer these services to our students.
Thank you, Ms. Tolan. Ms. Cohen, would you like to speak to your second?
That needed. Ms. Tolan did a lovely job.
Thank you. Any other speakers to this motion? Seeing none, I will now call for the vote. All in favor of this motion to award the contract as detailed by Ms. Tolan? We have Ms. Corbett Sanders, Ms. Marin, Ms. Cohen, Ms. Seismar Heiser, Ms. Omeish, Ms. Darnak Kofax, Mr. Frisch, Ms. Tolan, Ms. Keys-Gamara and myself. All of, please lower your hands. All of those opposed? Those abstaining? We have Ms. McLaughlin abstaining. Ms. Omeish, I do not believe I've recorded a vote for you. Can you give us a voice vote, please?
Oh, I voted in favor earlier.
Thank you so much. So that will be 11. I'm so sorry. I didn't recognize the voice. If I may complete the vote and then I will recite the speaker. Or Ms. McLaughlin, did you want to record a vote because I did not have one for you as well? Is that why? Is that you?
Yeah, my hand's been up for the extension. I had it up the whole time.
Okay, so then we are unanimous in that vote. Thank you.
No.
No, Ms. McLaughlin abstained.
Oh, you abstained. Oh, I'm so sorry. Thank you, Ms. McLaughlin. Then it is 11. Then it is 11 in favor, zero opposed and one abstention, which is Ms. McLaughlin. Thank you. Thank you both for that clarification. I now call Ms. Seismar Heiser for a motion to approve the strategic plan reports goes one through four.
Thank you. I move that the school board approve the school year 2019-2020 strategic plan goal one through four.
Is there a second? Thank you, Ms. Tolan. Ms. Seismar Heiser, would you like to speak to your motion?
Just, I'm going to say that I know that there was some concern on the board about our usual work sessions around hearing this strategic goal reports. And, you know, given the pandemic and the work that our staff has been doing, I appreciate the work that they've been doing and look forward to hearing these reports again next year. That's all. So thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Tolan, would you like to speak to your second?
Actually, I think Ms. Bukarski passed the second this one, but she has no objection. I'm happy to second.
I'm so sorry. I saw your hand out there and so I called on you. Are you fine to second the motion?
I'm fine to second the motion if that's okay with Ms. Bukarski.
Ms. Bukarski, do you have any objections?
Ms. Bukarski's been kicked out again, just FYI.
So we need to just move on. You are the second or Ms. Tolan?
I really don't have any additional comments beyond what my colleague, Ms. Seismar Heiser, said. You know, we do realize we are in a very special time now with COVID and so, you know, not all of our priorities that we're working on right now are necessarily reflected in these reports. But, you know, overall, they certainly, you know, are very useful and, you know, will be a tool of the house to move forward. So I would second this motion.
Thank you. Any other speakers to this motion? Ms. McLaughlin, please go ahead.
I guess, thank you. As I share with colleagues and Dr. Braybrand, I very much appreciate how the great degree of changes and improvements that have continued to be made with these goal reports. I really feel our superintendent and his team have been listening to board input and continue to make them stronger. Unfortunately, I know with time on the board's agenda and all the things we have, we really weren't able to dedicate the amount of deliberation with one another that we normally do. And I had expressed concern that I thought there's some additional analysis I'd like to see and really some more deliberation. So as a result, I will be choosing to abstain tonight on the reports just because I'm just not quite there, not quite ready yet to give my full approval for them. But do very much appreciate all the hard work that went into them and the progress that's being made.
Thank you, Ms. McLaughlin. Ms. Darnak Kofax?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. This has been a journey again. I appreciate following my colleague, Ms. McLaughlin. I have been, as some of my colleagues noted, been understanding of the need for efficiency during these COVID times and we have been working very hard. But I too feel at this point, there are many questions that I have not been able to delve into or suggestions to make for improvements. So I wanted to say that and state that I wish we had more time and more opportunity to do this. So tonight, my vote will also be an abstention. I'm not negating the work or saying I'm not supportive of it, but I am not at the point where I can completely support this going forward at this time.
Thank you. Ms. Corbett Sanders?
I too will be abstaining tonight for the reasons that my colleagues have already stated. But I do want to express my sincere appreciation of the staff and the leadership team in the refinements they have made to these reports. But the subjects that are contained in those reports directly relate to our ability to be fully successful in returning to school, in bridging opportunity gaps, achievement gaps and addressing concerns of some of our employees. There's a lot to unpack and I welcome next year's report being able to delve into it deeper as a board. But because we weren't able to delve into it to the same degree and it's no fault of anybody in this virtual room, but really because of the pressing times that we have before us and the top priority being making sure that we had a successful opening of schools this week and that we have all those students who want to be back in our schools, back in our schools in a hybrid model by the middle of March. We know that the time was not available for us to do the unpacking that we needed to do. So I appreciate everybody's great work, but I too am not ready to fully adopt something that we haven't had those discussions with. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing that there are no other speakers, I will now call for the vote. Ms. Mulberg, would you please display the motion? All those in favor? We have Ms. Seismar Heiser, Ms. Marin, Ms. Bukarski, Ms. Cohen, Mr. Frisch and myself. I'm sorry, Ms. Tolan and myself. That is, and Ms. Omeish. Thank you. That is eight. All of those against? We have none. All of those abstaining? We have Ms. Keys-Gamara, Ms. Corbett Sanders, Ms. McLaughlin and Ms. Darnak Kofax. The motion carries. At this time, I'd like to call Ms. Marin for a motion regarding the FY 2022 advertised budget.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson. So this has been quite a year due to the pandemic, but as the Budget Committee Chair, I can attest that the board and staff have conducted a thoughtful, thorough approach to developing the fiscal year 22 budget 2022. With our fiscal year beginning in July, work soon kicked off last summer to work with budget priority meetings for members to voice our priorities. And in the months that followed, we had regular updates where the committee shared to the board in writing and at meetings. We simultaneously conducted a budget program review of staffing formulas and program budgets to help inform the current future, current and future budget development. And then we also closely monitored the current fiscal year 21 budget as this also informed the development of this fiscal 22 development and planning work. So the superintendent's fiscal year 22 proposed budget reflects a modest request that focuses on the basic strategic needs of the system that is almost level with the previous year's budget. Despite the overall modest increase, the budget as proposed in January does require nearly $43 million in new funds from the Fairfax County Board of Supervisors, primarily due to reductions in state, federal and other revenue sources. But that is not enough, evidenced by the compensation discussion among board members at this past Tuesday's work session, as well as Virginia's House and Senate deliberations about compensation and our own neighboring communities' proposals for additional school system employee compensation. Employee compensation, as well as a few targeted amendments, are believed to have school board majority support this evening. Therefore, an omnibus motion has been developed. That is, a motion that addresses all amendments proposed as of last night. Members may speak to the omnibus motion in the aggregate or address individual components. It should be noted that the purpose of the omnibus motion is to streamline discussion and vote, to avoid lengthy discussions about the specific amendments since this was already addressed on Tuesday. And again, we believe that there is majority support for all included items. Now for the motion. I move to adopt the fiscal year 22 advertised budget as detailed in the fiscal year 22 superintendent's proposed budget with the following amendments. A. Increasing the county transfer request by a total of $60.3 million and increasing state revenue by $13.4 million based on the Senate's proposal for a total of $73.7 million to fund a 3% compensation increase for all employees. And B. Increasing the county transfer by $0.7 million or $700,000 to fund six positions to supplement select Title I schools. And C. Increasing the county transfer by $0.7 million to fund and address elementary school principal and assistant principal pay parity. D. Directing the superintendent to identify funds for a neurodiversity specialist position and a trauma-informed social emotional learning or SEL specialist position. And further, that the superintendent be directed to review staffing standards for counselors, psychologists, social workers, nurses, ESOL teachers, reading and math specialists and classroom teacher positions, including a multi-year plan to achieve the best practices ratios prioritized with an equity focus and to be completed in the fall prior to the preparation for the next year's fiscal year 23 proposed budget.
Thank you, Ms. Marin. Is there a second?
I seconded.
Thank you, Ms. Darnak Kofax. Ms. Marin, would you like to speak to your motion? I do realize you've given us a little bit of background.
I do, yes. As Budget Chair, I did provide that background. Just individually, I'd like to add a few more things. That the work this week was as up to the minute as we could get it as our General Assembly members work to determine what support can be provided to our school systems. I really urge our partners down in Richmond that are there working to be sure to support our public schools as we continue to provide necessary services to our children and families. I also do want to point out that the cost of private health insurance is a major driver of the need to ask for more revenue. The cost of health insurance is projected to increase 4.9%, which is $13.2 million over FY 21 as a result of rate increases. This is completely out of the hands of the school division. This is private insurance companies that are squeezing our local services that are offered by our county governments and even our state governments. So I believe that we have done all we can to propose a modest request and I look forward to approving this and sending it over to the County Board of Supervisors for their determination. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Marin. Ms. Darnak Kofax, would you like to speak to your second?
Yes, Dr. Anderson. I do want to thank my colleagues and our Budget Chair, Ms. Marin, for all of your hard work and the time and the many meetings and conversations we have had to get to this point today. I thank Lee Burden and Alex Wiggington and our entire budget team for their positive attitude, amazing work at managing our many meetings and answering budget questions. In Tuesday's work session and I'm sure tonight, my colleagues will share their thoughts and rationale for how we came and agreed upon.
rationale for how we came and agreed upon to this omnibus. So I will be brief and speak primarily to Item A. And I spoke to this a bit during the work session, but prior to FY 19 and 20, when FCPS received full funding from the county, FCPS had not received full funding for its budget request since 1995. That was 25 years ago. Since 2008, we have cut our budget over $70 million, including cutting nearly 2,700 physicians. While we were working to restore those cuts, we have not yet done so. As a board, we must be committed to making certain we are hiring and retaining the best and the brightest employees to teach our children, to counsel our children, to transport our children, to feed our children, and to ensure that their social and emotional needs are being met. And in order to do so, we must be competitive with our surrounding jurisdictions. Previous boards began in FY 17, and our Board last year made a commitment that FCPS employees, including our teachers, would reach 95% to 105% of our market share. It took four years of investments, adding nearly $175 million to our teacher scale to reach that goal. Several of our neighboring jurisdictions have passed salary, proposed salary increases. We have invested too much to lose ground now. So I appreciate my colleagues' thoughtful additions to the compensation element in this omnibus, and I look forward to hearing from you, and I look forward to passing this unanimously tonight.
Thank you very much, Ms. Darnak-Kofax. I see that we have several speakers to this motion, and we will begin with Ms. McLaughlin.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson. First, I want to express appreciation to our Budget Chair, Melanie Marin, and Vice Chair, Ms. Tammy Darnak-Kofax. Having done this work before, I know it takes a tremendous amount of time and coordination with senior staff, more than the public ever sees. So thank you both for your extensive amount of time and effort in that. And I certainly also appreciate Dr. Braybrand, our CFO, Lee Burden, and the other team members who worked really hard to get us here tonight. As we talked about at the final budget work session this past Tuesday, I really want to, again, emphasize what Ms. Darnak-Kofax said. While we're very appreciative of our partnership with the County Board of Supervisors, the County Executive, and we're very mindful that we are just one of the many services that our taxpayers support every given year, it is extremely important that we pass a needs-based budget. And part of our needs, irrespective right now of where all of the funding levels are, we need to at least communicate to the Board of Supervisors and to the public and to our employees what those needs are. And one of those needs is to ensure competitive pay. The fact that the states, through the General Assembly and the Governor's Office, are communicating that they do want to see employee raises for state employees and also for our educators, this Board deliberated very carefully on Tuesday about how we could best honor our employees and ensure competitiveness here in the northern Virginia region. And so we'll be supporting this budget, even though it does supersede what Superintendent Braybrand initially presented to us. And we are mindful of what the County Executive has said the revenue projections will be. But I do think that it's really important that, again, we communicate our needs. The Board of Supervisors will then have to take all of this into account. And as I shared with Ms. Kofax and others, I think it will be extremely important that this Board empower Dr. Anderson as Chairman of the Board, continue in those dialogues with Board Supervisors Chairman Jeff McKay, to make sure he understands that we are trying to be good partners. We are trying to be mindful of fiscal efficiency and effectiveness, but we really need to have this conversation between the two boards about what do we do for employee raises. And most importantly, for all employees listening tonight, I want to also emphasize something our Board has said. We realize you've worked extremely hard throughout the pandemic. The last thing we want to see is that anyone is facing any...
I think we have. I will let you finish that statement, but I believe we have some other microphones that are on. If we can turn them off so that we don't have that feedback. Very quickly, Ms. McLaughlin, if you can wrap up.
Absolutely. I just wanted to let everybody know that we're mindful that with healthcare premiums increasing for the school system and therefore employees as well, that alone is a concern that we want to make sure people are not working for less come July than they certainly have been this year already. So thank you, Dr. Anderson.
Thank you, Ms. McLaughlin. Ms. Corbett-Sanders, please go ahead, followed by Ms. Omeish.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson. And I want to first thank Ms. Marin and Ms. Darnak-Kofax, Ms. Whittington and Ms. Burden for yeoman's work for, this is the third budget that Ms. Burden and Ms. Whittington have worked with this Board in less than, just about a year. And as Ms. McLaughlin mentioned, we need to present a needs-based budget, but we also need to be cognizant that our budgets reflect the values of this Board. And this Board signaled last spring that we were concerned about compensation because of the adjustments we had to make last year. And so this omnibus budget or budget amendment actually reflects many of the priorities that this Board has espoused, not only in the adoption of last year's budget, but in the subsequent months as we have worked to get our students back in schools. And that includes employee compensation, support for social emotional supports for our students and our staff, as well as looking for additional funding sources to be able to address the critical needs of opportunity gaps and remediation caused by the COVID-19 pandemic. So those funds are actually, for the people watching from home, the funds for the summer school programming and the remediation and interventions are coming from ESAR funds, which were appropriated by the Congress at the end of December. The rest of this budget, which is what we are asking for from the Board of Supervisors, addresses the strategic priorities that this Board has coalesced and, through a very robust discussion on Tuesday, came to agree upon, as well as an additional piece, which picks up on a very important conversation, which is, how do we most effectively address the real social emotional needs of our students, to include staffing ratios that will come back in the form of a plan? So I am very supportive of this omnibus budget, omnibus motion, and I thank the makers of it, both Ms. Darnak-Kofax and Ms. Marin. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Corbett-Sanders. I now call on Ms. Omeish.
All right, there we go. Okay. Thank you. Really, starting off echoing immense gratitude for the Budget Team, Darnak-Kofax, and Ms. Burden and co. This has been a smooth process. I've really appreciated the amount of effort that's gone into making this an omnibus and gathering consensus and doing a lot of the legwork in advance so that we can bring this forward in a clean and smooth way. So I want that to be recognized. I wanted to just point out a couple of things. You know, I think this process showed us, you know, as we go to the Board of Supervisors every year and having to ask for what we want, that it's never truly reflective of the needs of our system, and that, in fact, if we were to add up all the needs, whether that's finding staff at the best practice ratios we'd expect, whether that's, you know, providing robust mental health supports for kids or academic supports that are so essential now, especially with COVID and the gaps that were created, that we would end up finding ourselves with a billion dollars or more over our budget, is the reality. And that's a problem, I mean, across, you know, as a country, we don't value education. We're number 66 in the world of funding. In the country, as a state, you know, we're number 24, way in the bottom, you know, of states that show through money that they care about this. So this is part of the challenge we find ourselves in. What I do want to say, though, highlighting particular elements, I, you know, obviously am pleased to see some development on the ESAL front. I think, colleagues, this is one of those areas where, you know, every chunk of work is a priority, but this is one of those that's been neglected for so long, seeing a ratio of 1 to 44, that even this incremental amount is going to, we're going to continue to need to think about this, just from an equity perspective. And then, of course, as I mentioned, the mental health and academic needs of our students. But I hope that really the main takeaway is that moving into the next year, we can look at the budget in a needs-based way. We can do a zero-based assessment, hopefully when COVID, you know, is no longer as significant of a consideration. And then also that we look at phased-in plans. Let's look at plans over several years so that we can anticipate these challenges, rather than, you know, every year, look at it and kind of have a narrow focus that doesn't allow us to solve these big problems that we continue to see year after year. So I would, that would kind of be my advocacy. I'm, you know, I know that we were in a tight position, and offering salaries this year, no doubt, for staff who've been working really hard is a no-brainer, especially given what our neighboring counties are doing and the reality of our economy. But I hope that moving forward, we keep those things in mind, that we have an opportunity, and that we start those conversations now with the Board of Supervisors so that we put it out there. You know, I want us to be honest about what the needs of our system is because that's what we owe our kids, and it is massive, but that's what it is. So I hope we can reflect on that in advance of next year's process.
Thank you, Ms. Omeish. Our next speaker is Ms. Seismohizer.
Sorry, I'm just getting my everything turned on. Thank you. I will try to be brief, but I really never am, so I'm just going to start it. I first want to, you know, echo my colleagues' thanks for our Budget Chair and Vice Chair and our entire Budget Team. Thank you, Ms. Marin, Ms. Darnak-Kofax, Ms. Burden, Ms. Whittington, and everybody for all your hard work, especially in adding the program budget reviews this year on top of the pandemic and everything else. And so I want to thank you for your work. I also just wanted to thank my colleagues and Dr. Boyd, Mike Bloom, Dr. Williams, you know, my conversations with staff about supporting a neurodiversity specialist. And from the bottom of my heart, from someone who has a special needs child and has been a long time advocating for our needs with a special needs child, I just wanted to thank you. Neurodiversity, you know, for those who aren't as familiar, is really an emerging trend in special education that helps, that emphasizes helping students learn to maximize their strengths rather than focus on their weaknesses. And the emerging research shows that creating a neurodiversity-oriented approach can improve educational and academic outcomes and reduce bullying. And so, you know, adding a neurodiversity specialist, one position that has, without asking for extra county transfer, really negative budget, will really allow FCPS to continue to be a leader in the education of students with disabilities. And I really just want to thank my colleagues for supporting this. As so many advocates wrote in to us, you know, the beauty of the neurodiversity model is that it normalizes a variety of human learning styles and seeks to maximize the strengths of each learner, rather than molding learners into a so-called quote-unquote "normal standard." It also helps to describe the unique behaviors and coping strategies that spring from different wired brains. And it's really a philosophy that our students with disabilities are definitely wired. They're not, they're part of diversity, and we should focus on their strengths like we do with all of our students. So I just wanted to thank you all for listening to me and hearing my advocacy, and thank our staff for embracing my advocacy for our neurodiverse students and our twice-exceptional students. So thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Seismohizer. Seeing that there are no other speakers, I will take a quick turn. Please turn up your microphones. Thank you. We have had an evening here with open mics and audio issues. I will speak very quickly before I turn it over to the vote. I do want to say thank you to Ms. Marin and Ms. Darnak-Kofax, Ms. Burden, and the entire Budget Team for having done this work, as Ms. McLaughlin's Vice Chair lashed here. I'm very appreciative of all the work that you have put in to ensure that we have a very, very smooth process. So thank you. I'm also very appreciative of Ms. McLaughlin's statement. While we want to be good partners with our Board of Supervisor colleagues, we also want to be sure that we are advocating for what this division requires in order to move forward in a successful way for all of our students. We do need to present a needs-based budget. This is not a fully, this is not fully representative of that, but we are definitely heading in that direction. So I really look forward to continuing those discussions with Chairman McKay, as McLaughlin has shared. I'm happy to support the efforts of our team here, and I will be glad to support this omnibus motion. So finally, prior to the vote for adoption of the FY 22 advertised budget, just a gentle reminder that it is our obligation to approve a budget that conveys to the Board of Supervisors a budget that meets the needs of our, of FCPS in the upcoming year. We have much work to do, but we are heading in the right direction. Thank you so much to Dr. Braybrand and his team, as we continue to invest in every FCPS child by name and by need. At this time, the motion before us is on the screen. I will call for the vote. Those in favor, please raise your hands at this point. Ms. Corbett-Sanders, Ms. Darnak-Kofax, Ms. Omeish, Ms. Seismohizer, Ms. Okarsky, Ms. Marin, Ms. Tolan, Ms. McLaughlin, Ms. Keys-Gamara, Mr. Frisch, and myself. That is 11. Please lower your hands. All of those opposed? I'm sorry, Ms. Cohen, was that vote in favor? I think I caught you at the tail end there.
Yes, ma'am.
Then that makes it unanimous. The motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Marin and Ms. Darnak-Kofax, for all of your work on this. At this time, I will call on Ms. Omeish for a follow-on motion.
I move to direct the Superintendent to hold a work session in the fall of 2021 on the Board's strategic priorities in an effort to provide early guidance to the Superintendent prior to the preparation of the proposed budget presented in January 2022.
Is there a second? Thank you, Ms. Corbett-Sanders. Ms. Omeish, would you like to speak to your motion?
Yes. In the prior budget conversation, we had a number of follow-on motions related to the alignment of the strategic plan and the budget. This will give us the opportunity to do this in advance. I know as a full Board of us 12, we haven't had the chance to define the strategic plan yet, and that would be an opportunity to, right after doing that, have a discussion on how the budget is going to look in advance of it coming with the Superintendent's proposal so that we have that chance to shape it according to that perspective. To me as well, it matters a lot that we have the equity piece involved in the preliminary conversation so that we're looking at it in a way that prioritizes systematically, rather than kind of coming at it at what we've heard or what we think is important. So this is an opportunity to allow us to do that in advance, and I certainly let Ms. Corbett-Sanders elaborate further on the history of the importance of this since 2016.
Thank you very much, Ms. Omeish, Ms. Corbett-Sanders.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Anderson. This Board and the previous Board has long advocated for increased transparency and accountability in our budgeting process. The approach built, this approach builds on the very helpful pre-meetings between Budget Staff, the Budget Committee Chair and/or Vice Chair, and individual Board members conducted this fall, and the ongoing unpacking of the program budgets that we've done this year. A public work session allows for the community to hear these discussions amongst Board members about the priorities of the Board and complements the work that our Budget Chair has initiated this year. This follow-on motion incorporates an approach which is similar to the approach used in neighboring jurisdictions, including Alexandria, Arlington, and Loudoun, where the Board offers guidance to the Superintendent in advance of the preparation of the budget proposal, ensuring that we, as a Board, collectively agree on priorities for budget guidance to the Superintendent prior to the development of the Superintendent's proposed budget. It also allows for the Board to have discussions and develop a consensus on the Board's strategic priorities prior to the annual November meeting with the Board of Supervisors, and addresses concerns and comments made about how we collectively signal our priorities to the Board of Supervisors expressed this past work session. I've been asked why this budget, why this motion is needed now versus in late May when we adopt the final budget for the year, and I want to address this. The Board is committed to continuous process improvements. The follow-on motion today addresses the process associated with the adoption of the proposed budget and addresses how future proposed budgets should be developed. It is based on a best practice, which is used in our neighboring districts and leads to increased transparency in our processes, and it is directly related to the action we're taking today, which is on how we go about the budget proposal and how that gets adopted versus the final... how that gets adopted versus the final budget adoption, which reflects actions taken by the board of supervisors and our state legislators. So I hope that I can, um, have the support of all of our colleagues, uh, for both Ms. Omeish and I in this follow on motion. I think it's a great process improvement. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Corbett Sanders. I see that we have speakers for this motion. Um, I will now call on Ms. McLaughlin.
Thank you. I'm very happy to support this follow on motion and, um, just want to, uh, tag in here. Uh, that is, Dr. Braybrand knows and my colleagues know, I've been a tireless champion for us. I'm improving our school clinics and increasing school nurses. And nothing more than the pandemic has shown, um, how important it is to have school nurses um, in our schools. And so, um, I'm going to just give a little plug to Dr. Braybrand and his team. Uh, he knows there's two prior follow on motions from November, two thousand and eighteen and from February of two thousand and nineteen, uh, that I had asked for information from staff, um, that we look at best practices. I know the superintendent has assured me that, um, with a new team in place, they're very committed to helping us get that um, coordinated information from the county, uh, who are our partners in running our school clinics. But I did want to just spotlight here that these follow on motions are important. They are directions from the board. And, uh, I do really look forward to ensuring that, uh, my outstanding, um, motion, follow on motions that are still in need of of information will, uh, actually accompany, uh, some of this budget work that we're going to get. Um, by the motion that I certainly encourage my colleagues to support this evening. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McLaughlin. Ms. Tolan?
Yes, um, I just wanted to make a couple of comments. I'm very happy to support this motion. Um. You know, I've had numbers of conversations with, um, you know, Karen Corbett Sanders and other colleagues on the importance for a strategic view to all of our work and particularly, you know, tying our, uh, strategies to our, um, you know, our important strategies to our budget and how we're spending our money because that's, you know, where we spend our money certainly, uh, tells, um, you know, what our, um, priorities are. Um, I also, I really like the, uh, the timing that this, um, motion is asking for, for us to really, you know, start in the fall. Um, before we really dive into the budget process to set some of these, um, you know, priorities. And I also think that, uh, it's a good time because it can feed into other things as well. For example, tonight we had our, you know, goal reports, you know, goals one through four. Um, you know, that we, you know, all expressed a little bit that we didn't feel like we necessarily could dive into them the way we wanted to. But, um, by setting, you know, priorities and a strategic view in the fall, that could also feed into, um, you know, those goal reports, one through four, um, that, you know, are certainly a big part of our, um, you know, strategic plan. So anyway, um, thank you very much to, um, Ms. Omeish and, um, Karen Corbett Sanders for putting, uh, forward this motion. I'm happy to support it.
Thank you, Ms. Tolan. Um, seeing that there are no other speakers, I will be speak to this motion. I am happy to support it. Um, and I also want to just put a plug into even taking a different, uh, in another, in another look at our strategic, um, scorecard. I think that conversation should also be one that we take, um, that we take up as a board in the fall. I know we began this work last February, um, prior to the pandemic. But I think that will really help to inform, um, what our budget priorities are. Aligning all of these documents would really help to focus our work. And I'm looking very much to, um, doing that in the fall and hopefully we can have these things be aligned with each other. We look at our scorecard, we look at our budget, and we have these collective conversations, um, that are aligned, um, to the mission of F C P S. Um, I see that there are two additional hands to speak. Um, so I will call on those two members and then if there are no others after that, I will call for the vote. Uh, Ms. Darnak Kofax and then Ms. Marin.
Just very briefly, I appreciate my colleagues, um, Ms. Omeish and Ms. Corbett Sanders bringing this forward. Um, I have spoken to both of them about the, you know, uh, my thoughts and their support, uh, uh, my thoughts and support of their amendment. Here, um, talking about, I know I can't speak, it's getting too late.
I had the same struggle.
But basically, um, I think it's extremely important, um, that we as a board not only have the two by twos, but we have that, once we have that done, we have that strategic conversation as a board. What are our priorities? What do we need to invest in? We cannot invest in everything all the time. We have limited resources. So I think it's a fine time to put this out right now. I think, um, you know, we will again revisit it as, um, as, once the final budget is posted. It will be a follow on motion to that too. And, um, I think it's important that we as a collective do come together and talk about what our strategic initiatives are. We have a good understanding of it and we fund them. So thank you for bringing this forward.
Thank you, Ms. Darnak Kofax. Ms. Marin, you are the last speaker, I think.
Okay, then I'll, I'll wrap it all up then. Um, I, you know, I, of course, the idea of melding together our strategic planning with our budget. This is something that's been raised in, in various meetings, um, most recently with the goal reports. And so, you know, I can, I can support it. I just want to caution us that, you know, that's really planning for the fiscal year twenty-three budget. And I know, I, I like that we're being ambitious, but we also need to be realistic. We just are approving the proposed budget. And we still have to, you know, adopt that budget in May. We still have other program budget reviews happening and quarterly reviews. And so it would be unwise to expect staff to be able to dig in and start working on this, um, you know, thoughtfully. So I think that this ties to much larger conversations that we've been having about our work, getting our work throughout the year and having a um, a plan full and expected timeline of work. Um, I also think that this could, you know, be re-envisioning how some of the budget committee works. Um, use ad hoc committees or task force in some way. So I just want to, again, tie this, this work that's very tactical and thoughtful. And, and think about how we as a board can do it in a way that cripple us, um, in all other aspects of the, you know, the goals that we're trying to, to do in, in other work and, and other legally required work. So, um, just wanted to share that. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. McLaughlin, did you want to go back or did you just trick me here?
Oh, I'm sure you wish I was tricking you. I just had a quick go back.
Okay, um, go ahead, please.
Thank you. Uh, I just wanted to get Dr. Braybrand's sock because part of the challenge of a follow on is whether or not our, our language is clear enough that he sort of understands, uh, what this directive is to the board. Um, I really appreciate what Ms. Marin said. Um, but I, I, I know for many, many years, we as a board have talked at a very high level about tying our budget to the strategic plan. And I think at times there's been maybe not a sense because it seems esoteric. And to me, I, I, I think this board is trying to be, um, mu- much more tangible about what this means than it's simply saying. Rather than Dr. Braybrand and the team trying to get a sense of where we want to, um, strategically target our positions, our school-based positions and that the, um, uh, the, um, central office supports that we get, um, that this would, whether it's meetings, some summer conversations, the task force work that Ms. Marin said. But I do hope that Dr. Braybrand knows we are open to talking with him on how to operationalize the follow on motion afterwards so that, uh, we really can hopefully move the needle and, and do this in a really effective way for staff timing on ours.
No, thank you, Ms. McLaughlin. I, I'll just simply briefly say out of this pandemic, we need a new strategic plan and we need to continue to refine our budget process to meet that strategic plan. So I totally support this follow on. And I want to thank this board. This is in less than three weeks on a major issue. A united board, a unanimous vote, first return to school. And now a, uh, an advertised budget that I think is sending a statement to our community and all of our stakeholders. So kudos to this board this evening on this vote on the budget. Um, tonight, um, I really, really do appreciate it very much. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Certainly smoother than others, right, Dr. Braybrand?
Yes.
And hopefully it doesn't have to happen twice. That would be important as well. Um, at this point, I would like to call for the vote on the follow on motion, which will be posted on the screen by Ms. Mulberg. All of those in favor of the motion as posted, please raise your hands at this time. Ms. Corbett Sanders, Ms. McLaughlin, Ms. Omeish, Ms. Darnak Kofax, Ms. Cohen, Ms. Marin, Mr. Frisch, Ms. Pakarsky, Ms. Tolan, Ms. Seismohizer, Ms. Keys Gamara and myself. That is unanimous. Please lower your hands at this to, at this time. I will invite our vice chair to continue with our next two agenda items while I take a much appreciated sip of water. Ms. Pakarsky.
I am happy to do our consent agenda. Our adopted rules of parliamentary procedure, Robert's rules, provide for consent agenda listing several items for approval of the board by a single motion. Many items listed have gone through board review and documentation has been provided to all board members and the public in advance. Items may be removed from the consent agenda at the request of any board member prior to the meeting. These consent agenda items are on the screen. Is there any objection to approving the consent agenda? Hearing and seeing no objection, the consent agenda is approved. New business. The following are new business agenda items. There will not be a vote on these items tonight, but action is scheduled at a future meeting. New business items are on the screen.
Thank you very much, Ms. Pakarsky. At this time, I will call on Dr. Braybrand for superintendent matters.
Thank you, Chairman Anderson. Just a couple of quick things to share. First, I want to share with you. We know we need to continue to reach out to all of our stakeholders. Uh, those that we've communicated well with, but many that we've not connected well with. Uh, and that we can do better and continuous improvement remains our mindset. This month, we have launched in pocos palabras, which means in Spanish, in a few words. It's an F C P S podcast in Spanish and English to share timely, important school news with families. The goal of the podcast is to help families access key resources to help their kids' education. There are three podcasts currently available on the website and will continue to add to the library. And I want to thank our office for ESOL services and the Office of O P L F E for their work on this important project. And I look forward to providing future updates as the scope of this work expands beyond just our Spang, with the Spanish language community. I also want to share with you virtual instructional job fair. February twentieth, we'll have another virtual instructional job fair for, uh, this year, um, here on February twentieth and you, participants can learn about professional development, benefits, and of course, all the jobs that we have available. Um, virtual interviews will be held from February twenty-second through March fifth. And we're looking for teachers, counselors, librarians, occupational therapists, physical therapists, speech, language pathologists, any of those folks who want to join the F C P S team should visit our instructional job bear, uh, page to learn more and apply online. And then finally, I know many of you may have seen in the national news that, um, perseverance, uh, NASA's, uh, robot landed on Mars. And guess what? Like many things, not just locally, regionally, nationally, worldwide, but in the universe. There's always a Fairfax connection. And several board members, I think Ms. McLaughlin and Ms. Cohen were with me what seems like years ago, but a little over a year ago, were at Lake Braddock to watch Alex, uh, Mather be recognized out of twenty-eight thousand entries. It was Alex who came up with the name of this rover, Perseverance. And it was, uh, exciting to see him be honored by NASA. He got to go watch, uh, perseverance lift off. And, uh, it was great to see him, uh, sharing, uh, his love of science. Um, with, uh, folks in the media as the rover landed on Mars. And so what a great Fairfax connection and a reminder that we are here to serve students and to help them hope and dream. One day he wants to be a NASA engineer and I think he's well on his way. And, uh, it was great to see that in the news. So thank you all again for, uh, uh, um, uh, your vote on the budget. I think again, a united vote on a very strong statement to our stakeholders and our community. So thank you all very much and have a nice evening.
Thank you very much, Dr. Braybrand. Um, at this point, I will invite our board committee chairs to report on their committee's activities. Um, and we will begin with Mr. Frisch.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson. I'll keep this brief. Uh, the governance committee met on February ninth. During our meeting, we finalized, finally, uh, suggested changes to strengthen our conflicts of interest policy for senior level staff. Um, and it has been sent to the full board for consideration. Additionally, we adjusted the policy review docket to streamline processes and make the committees work more efficient. So looking forward to operating under that regime, uh, starting at our next meeting in just a couple of weeks. That's it. Thank you.
Oh, fantastic. Thank you. And I believe we have a committee report from the budget committee. That was a joke. Have any, uh, I'm sorry, Ms. Um, Seismohizer, did you have a report?
I know, ma'am, we met, I reported the last meeting and so I'll report on the next one.
Thank you. Then we are going to proceed to board matters. And I will begin with Ms. Cohen, followed by Ms. Marin.
Thanks so much. I just wanted to say thank you to Hunt Ballet Elementary School, who was so kind to welcome me to their Bridge to Cape program last week. We have some really excited kindergartners who are counting that they only have five sleeps left until they're back in the building. Um, and it was just awesome to get to, to be with them. And thank you to all of our staff and students who have gone above and beyond to make all this work in our buildings. Um, I got the opportunity this past week to speak to custodians, bus drivers, teachers, food service workers. Our IAs, assistant principals and principals, and I know how hard you all are working. And I know everybody is beyond maximum capacity, excited but tired. And so thank you so much for all that you're doing and your service to our students and our families and our whole community. We're excited to be back together. So thank you.
Great, thank you. So, um, I, I was neglecting, I neglected to thank our assistant superintendent for financial services. The fearlessly burden. Thank you to you and your team is Alice Wiggington, um, Dorian and Marty Smith, of course, and Dr. Braybrand on the budget work. Thank you very much for working all the time throughout the holiday weekend, most recently. Um, I've also been, the second biggest project in my life lately has been preparing my own child to return to the classroom. My second grader will be going back. And, uh, that's been, um, he's having a hard time accepting that and we're trying to figure that out. So like a lot of parents, I, I know, um, that it's hard to make these decisions and you're trying to do the best that you can for your kid. Uh, the other thing I've been focused on is the calendar, the school year calendar. And I'm glad to hear more of my colleagues are interested in trying to find some kind of a compromise that honors the work of the calendar committee to, um, include more religious and cultural observances. That also balances a need for instruction, rest, athletics, performances, you know, all of the things that our calendar does need to balance. And so I'm eager for solutions there. And then finally, uh, the general assembly, just continuing to try and monitor what's happening. And thank you to Michael Malloy and our staff. And to Ms. Darnak Kofax for being our legislative liaison at the state. Um, wow, things just move really fast there. So I've been trying to, you know, let people know when they can advocate, but it's, it's, it's just very fast moving. Um, last week I was also happy to join the Vienna Baptist Church's legislative update, um, conversation, which I thought was really meaningful. It talked about a lot of different issues. Uh, their community not only is from the Vienna area, but all over Fairfax and even beyond. Um, I also was glad to join the thorough PTA over at the Vienna Community Center virtually to talk about some return to school items with the parents there. And lastly, And lastly, something to look forward to, on February 27th, the South Lakes Pyramid is going to be having its Broadway Night. So there'll be over 100 students from the high school and all the theater schools in the pyramid. There's going to be, uh, Broadway actors and film actors introducing acts, and it's in partnership with the Reston Community Center, so check it out. Um, online, it's February 27th. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Ms. Marin. And now I will call our next three speakers, so please follow each other um, without any additional introduction. Ms. Corbett Sanders, Ms. Omesh, and Ms. Darnak Kofax. That's Ms. Corbett Sanders, Ms. Omesh, and Ms. Darnak Kofax.
So I want to start with thanking the, um, staff at Bucknell Elementary. I loved being there as our youngest learners got off of the school bus and came into our school on, uh, Tuesday. The joy on the children's faces above the mask was just riveting. And the enthusiasm of the kids being back in the building, but also the staff being back in the building was, was something that, um, was just so heartwarming, and I look forward to visiting some of our other schools, um, coming up. I also want to congratulate the Lady Wolverines at West Potomac. They, um, although they lost yesterday to Madison, they had a fantastic run. For the first time, they were regional champs. And in the state semifinals, uh, it ended the season, but it was the first time in the history of West Potomac that the Lady Wolverines went that far. So congratulations, Lady Wolverines. Um, and with that, have a great evening, everybody.
All right, um, so tonight was, uh, was a tough night, uh, on Equity, and I think moving forward, I'm, I'm looking forward to seeing how we can develop structures and systems in place, uh, amongst ourselves and review some of our policies, um, and how we do things to make sure that our outcomes match our, our values. Um, I do want to say, uh, it was really exciting, of course, to have some students, um, begin to return safely uh, over the past week. Um, I have heard some, uh, great stories of, of kids reuniting with teachers, um, and that's going to be something we continue to monitor and of course have to continue to mitigate to make sure that that continues to be successful. Um, and that we don't, you know, kind of sabotage the opportunity to continue moving in that direction. Um, I have heard a number of student concerns about, uh, grading and potential, uh, flexibility there, so I look forward to seeing Dr. Braybrand, what, uh, may come out of that. I know the Student Advisory Council has been very vocal in advocating for particular proposals, and, uh, obviously Nathan has been reinforcing that. Um, so I'd love to see how we can support, uh, not only student mental health, but in general, um, what's going on on that front. Um, I am looking forward to some roundtables with community leaders this weekend, uh, to get the pulse of how folks are doing and what they're hearing on the ground. I had the chance to, um, gather a brilliant group, uh, in a Student Environmental Task Force, which Ms. Tolan had been supporting on as well, uh, as a, as a Student Mental Health Task Force, um, to see what we can come up with, um, to be of, of benefit to these students. Um, and finally, uh, I had, uh, we had our, uh, stream with the Student Environmental Task Force, and we'll have another one in, uh, two weeks, uh, as a town hall, so folks can ask their live questions and answers, um, at that time. Uh, the last comment to my colleagues, I think, you know, today was, uh, another opportunity for us to think about long-term solutions. Um, thinking ahead for our budget, we just put in our ask. You know, I hope that maybe in the coming, uh, time, in addition to what I said earlier, we begin to even think about prioritizing the conversation on savings like we did before, given the time that we're in. Um, and then also alternate sources of funding, um, that we might want to be creative about to, to make sure that we're sustainable in the long run. But that's all from me.
And, um, I want to thank our, uh, principals, teachers, and staff for all of the hard work that you are continuing to do. As you make this transition into a hybrid learning model, we continue to appreciate you very much. And I know, um, students who are choosing to go, um, back into the classrooms are looking very much forward to being reunited with you in person. Um, I, as Ms. Marin, uh, noted, um, the legislative issues continue to move along, um, in our, in Richmond, and, um, Mr. Malloy, um, does do weekly updates. He'll be doing one tomorrow or over the weekend. Again, if colleagues have questions or comments about what is happening, because it does happen so fast, um, please reach out to me directly, or Mr., and I can connect you with Mr. Malloy, or if I can't, if I can't answer the question. And finally, I do want to thank my colleagues, um, for all of your hard work tonight on the budget. Um, during this week, um, there were lots of twists and turns and, um, getting, having a lot of those conversations and spending extra time on Tuesday, I think really made a difference for all of us. So, um, thank you again. We are not done. We're just at the midpoint. We're at halftime, and we still have lots of hard work to do, so we need to continue this kind of good work. And again, appreciate, um, all that we're able to do together on this, in this front to, uh, compensate our, our staff and our teachers and all of the other, um, well, well, well-fought-out, um, additions to, um, our funding that are needed. So thank you and good night.
Thank you, Ms. Darnak Kofax. Our next three speakers, Ms. Pakarski, Mr. Frisch, and Ms. Seismohizer. Ms. Pakarski, we will begin with you, followed by Mr. Frisch and Ms. Seismohizer.
Thank you. I wanted to take the opportunity, um, in my comments, to thank Dr. Braybrand, our very hard-working staff, and our Budget Chair and, um, Co-Chair, as others have noted. They have put in, um, endless hours and effort into getting us to the point, uh, where we, um, are tonight, and I, I too was thankful that we were able to work closely together as a board, listen to each other, and, um, had the extra time this week to really, um, to work on our, um, best path forward and ask, um, from the Board of Supervisors with this budget. I was, um, I had the opportunity last week to have a PTA leader town hall and thoroughly enjoyed the discussion and the comments. They are very helpful. And I appreciate the fact people took the time to come out. Um, I have, uh, I'm visiting Westfield PTSD next week, uh, my own, uh, daughter's school, so I'm excited about that. Of course, I also had the opportunity to meet with a few students from Chantilly High School who wanted to share their, uh, experiences, um, in our schools and, uh, areas for improvement with our Equity work. Uh, and it was a very fruitful and insightful conversation, and I, I appreciate the fact that they took the time, uh, to reach out and, and do that advocacy and be so open and willing to talk to me. Um, I will also be hosting a, a joint budget town hall as I did last year with Supervisor Kathy Smith. Uh, we are working on, uh, final details and plans, and I will have that out, uh, soon. So that should be about mid-March. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pakarski. I guess I'm next. Um, so since our last meeting, I've had the pleasure of meeting with, uh, the Mosby Woods Community and the Stenwood Elementary School PTA. Um, and with students returning to in-person instruction, I'm in the process of scheduling school visits in the weeks ahead at different schools throughout Providence District. So I'm very much forward, looking forward to that and those visits, and I am incredibly appreciative of all of the hard-working principals, teachers, bus drivers, custodians, and other hard-working staff members who are making this return to in-person instruction possible. I've heard my partner in the other room all week telling his students that they will no longer be learning in our living room with him. So, um, I'm looking forward to seeing our students back in action on campus. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, and I'm happy to follow Mr. Frisch. I, you know, also want to thank Dr. Braybrand, our staff, our teachers, our principals, our school building staff, our, you know, custodians, bus drivers, our families, and most importantly to me, our students, um, for all that they're doing to be flexible and, and all the hard work that everybody's putting into this year. And, um, whether it's the students who are returning in person or the students who are staying virtual, um, I'm, I'm looking forward to supporting all of them. Uh, I also am really grateful to be able to go to Key Center on their first day to welcome their special education students back in the building. Um, the students were thrilled to be back, and, and I know the staff is thrilled to have them back in the building as well. And so I look forward to, um, to Mr. Frisch for the school visits that I'll be doing as well and setting those up. I just wanted to also say that I'm really excited. Um, my own son is also going back in-person learning, and he's already circled the date on the calendar with a big old smiley face, so, uh, that might tell you what his mental health is in terms of returning to in-person learning. But I also know that those who stayed virtual, we need to make sure that we, um, intentionally include and ensure that they continue to have a good experience. Um, I will say that I want to thank Ms. Tolan for inviting me to meet with, um, many members of her constituents, as we talked about the McLean language boundary changes, and I, I'm grateful to be able to hear from the community as we move forward on that. And I'm excited, actually, tomorrow with, uh, Mr. Onabudo to attend a meeting with several students at Lake Batic Secondary School, who took it upon themselves to do a student survey around student wellness and received over 2,000 responses from their school and put together an incredible presentation for their PTA regarding student stressors and, um, student wellness. And so I'm excited to meet with them to hear more about what they found and how we can help support them moving forward. So kudos to the students of Lake Braddock. And moving forward, I'm looking forward to hosting my first PTA roundtable as an at-large member. It's, it's a little trickier because I have 200 schools that I'm trying to meet with, so I I'm going to be starting region-wide PTA roundtables in addition to my regular town halls, and so I'm looking forward to my first Region One Roundtable next week. Um, and I'll have more information about my next town hall, um, soon as well. And I just wanted to say, I, I really want to thank my colleagues on the board for all the work that we've done on some very difficult topics and how we call us together as a board. And I'm looking forward to, um, more great work where we really, really listen to each other and work together and work with staff to come to some really great places, um, even if they're difficult decisions. And, um, so I want to thank my colleagues. And, um, with that, I'm going to say good night, and I'll look forward to hearing what the rest of my colleagues have to say.
Thank you, Ms. Seismohizer. Our next three speakers are Ms. Keys-Gamara, Ms. Tolan, and Ms. McLaughlin. Just to repeat, Ms. Keys-Gamara, Ms. Tolan, and Ms. McLaughlin.
Thank you. I will be, uh, quick. I have been in the process of, um, planning a mental health discussion, uh, taking into account many of the events, um, that our students have experienced. It has been scheduled for Wednesday. I am hoping to be able to go forward with that, but I would like to say to the community that I am dealing with a family medical matter, so if I have to cancel, that would be the reason. Uh, and we will reschedule along with office hours. Um, I also wanted to, um, thank everyone, uh, for being, being able to participate with the Vienna Baptist Legislative Discussion. I really enjoyed that. And, uh, thank you and good night.
Yes, good evening. Um, I'm, of course, very happy that we're moving forward to offer, um, an in-person option for our families. Um, but families can also opt to stay virtual, and interestingly, it's, if you really look across the entire, uh, Dreamsville District, it's almost a 50/50 split um, with our families. Um, I'm glad that FCPS is planning a measured approach to moving our students into our buildings so that we can continually monitor our safety and mitigation measures and assess their effectiveness. And we can also ensure that our instructional technology and teaching practices are working well for those in school and at home. Um, with almost 50% of our students still electing to remain virtual, I plan to, man, uh, monitor their experience as well um, among the excitement of, um, people showing up into our schools. Don't want our virtual students to be overlooked. Um, even with our constraints, you know, our goal continues to be, I want to maximize our students' education, prioritize their emotional well-being, and continue to strengthen the connections in our school communities. And speaking of connections, I want to really give a, a special thanks to our school, uh, staff and administrators for um, working so hard to give information to all of our students and families as to, you know, what they should be expecting over the next, um, several weeks. Um, we've had some fun things happen. Uh, the Chesterbrook Elementary School Chipmunks put out a great, uh, welcome back to their students, a little fun video. Um, and so we're seeing lots of fun things like that happening across the schools in Dreamsville. Um, also wanted to just remind people that, uh, TJ admissions are due next, um, week, February 26th. And excited to, um, understand that at this point, we're seeing a good number of applications coming in from across all of our middle schools. Um, the Langley Pyramid, um, PTAs, uh, is doing a Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Committee. That, that committee is celebrating Black History Month with a special project, um, this month, 28 days of podcasts, videos, short readings, and a book club. Uh, we are all reading the, the book Blind Spot. Uh, please join us for this activity. You can see the Langley High School, um, the Cooper or the, um, Churchill Road, um, PTA websites to get more information. Um, I was also happy to attend the Vienna Baptist Church Legislative Event, um, and, and enjoyed that immensely, and also attended the, uh, McLean, um, PTS, McLean High School PTSD meeting last week as well. Uh, despite working virtually, FCPS has 55 scholars selected from millions of high school students across the country that will be, have been honored as Presidential Scholars. And we have 19 of, of those 55 candidates in the Dreamsville District, um, five at Langley High School, one at McLean, and 13 at TJ. Uh, keep up the great work. Congratulations. Um, I will be meeting with Dreamsville High School students next week from all three of our high schools, um, to start joint conversations across the schools um, about issues with, um, schools, returning to in-person learning, um, you know, student wellness, et cetera. Um, you know, it's a great follow-up to our comments from our student this evening, Teddy Geis. Uh, I'm very much looking forward to hearing these student voices and, uh, working with them um, over the next several months as we, um, you know, transition, um, you know, the way we're teaching and, and working with students. So thank you very much. Have a, have a wonderful evening.
Oh goodness, looks like my turn's up, my turn's on. Sorry, Dr. Anderson. Um, so anyway, I, I know it's late, but I do want to say, it, this is my 10th budget that I have been a part of on the board, and I've never seen us finish this early in the evening. So I do, um, want to compliment my fellow colleagues and, uh, let staff know that sometimes these, uh, extra work sessions mean we can, uh, have a really smooth process, um, when we get to the end on something like tonight's vote. Um, just a couple of things. First, I wanted to say that I really appreciated last night that the Braddock District Council, which represents our civic associations in the Braddock District, had invited me to come and present on the Fairfax County School Budget, and I really took a lot of, uh, care to help explain why, um, the board was adding, um, the additional dollars, uh, for employee raises and that the, the data and the merits for why we felt that was important to send over to the Board of Supervisors. Um, and then I just, uh, want to, uh, also convey how much I appreciated what our student, um, Nathan Onabudo said this evening about bringing the temperature down. Uh, as we know, uh, President Biden has also talked about how we can bring our communities together, our country together, and, um, this board, uh, the 12 of us, I, I know um, absolutely to my core, um, every single one of the 12 of us is as dedicated as possible for our employees, our students, and our families. Um, while we are all trying to come at the best solutions for how to return to in-person learning to address the mental health impacts, um, of COVID, I just want to reassure the public that while we so value, um, your passion and we value, um, hearing your deep, deep concerns, um, I do want to reemphasize again, every single one of us cares deeply. This is really, um, grinding work we do on the board. The public doesn't see a lot of, uh, the time we put into it. And this isn't to, um, say that we deserve applause. We don't. We're public servants. But I do want to reassure people that, um, we don't want to have division among the 12 of us, and I hope that you, uh, also recognize, uh, how much we are all together collectively trying to find the best solutions to open our schools, and I hope we can try and, and speak in- And I hope we can try and, and speak in, in that vein, knowing that the criticisms that we expend toward any of us, and I've been on the receiving end as have my colleagues, I don't think that it's reflective or accurate about our dedication and our commitment. So in any case, I, I really look forward to everything that we can do to help Dr. Braybrand and this school system successfully begin to reopen our schools. And I absolutely encourage our employees and our families and students, let us know how it's going. We want to be a bridge of communication to the school system. And so yes, your voices are always, again, encouraged and welcomed. But I hope we will continue to be thoughtful in, in how we communicate. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McLachlan. Again, I find myself between adjournment and everybody going to have an earlier evening than normal. But I do have a few things that I'd like to share, but I will try very much to keep them brief. I do want to say thank you to, very much to our school staff. Because as a parent of an elementary student and a middle schooler, I see firsthand all of the preparations that are happening at our schools to receive our students as we enter into the school buildings. I have a son who was slated to be virtual, but we have made that change to have him return in person. And I want to say thank you to Dr. Braybrand and the staff at Glasgow for, while we were on that waitlist, we got off of that waitlist, and he's going to be able to return in person. I'm very appreciative of the flexibility that has been provided to parents to toggle back and forth and to make decisions that best fit their families in this moment rather than the decisions that we made back in July. So I'm very appreciative of that. And as always, I have to send a special shout out to the folks at Mason Crest Elementary because they continue to go above and beyond for our students. And I just want to make sure that Principal Shin and Assistant Principal Aiello and Pratt, that they know that we see their work and we're very appreciative of all of their efforts. Similarly, visiting Glasgow and Holmes in this past week, just seeing all of the preparations that are in place to receive our students, we're very grateful for all of your thoughtfulness. I want to quickly say thank you to the Justice PTA for having me at their meeting last week. Your work and focus on equity, it's really unparalleled. I'm very grateful for the voices that were in the room to ensure that our parents are all included in the decisions that are made at our schools. I do want to offer a reminder to the Mason District PTA and PTOs. My roundtable will be on the 23rd, and I hope to see all of our PTA and PTO leadership there. Lastly, I do want to say a special thank you to Mr. Smith. When the vaccinations that he is, I think, has been spearheading on our behalf kind of went awry with scheduling and having to go back, it was painstaking to hear and see how he and his team were literally going through hundreds of names, thousands of names, to ensure that our teachers had timely rescheduling of their vaccinations. So thank you for doing that job with your team. It's definitely not something that I think anyone had the opportunity to know was happening. My last two comments are going to be, again, brief. I want to say happy birthday to Ms. Lee Burden, who I know she spent her birthday yesterday working on all matters budget. So I wanted to take a moment to at least publicly wish you a happy birthday. And also to our very honest Seismohizer, who will not make her birthday with us because it is tomorrow and we are going to adjourn much earlier than midnight. So I'd like to invite all of my colleagues to please say a happy birthday to both of these wonderful folks before we adjourn.
Happy birthday, Lee.
Happy birthday, ladies.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday, everyone.
And we have managed to keep you with us, Mr. Onabudo, through the end tonight.
The entire meeting, yeah.
That's right. Good night, everybody.
So we have not yet adjourned. It's not official. I have more to say. Not cool. No, I don't. It is 10:18. Our meeting is adjourned. Good night, everyone.